I'm calling the January 10th, 2022, meeting of the Evanston City Council to order. We will begin with our roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rebel?
Here.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Fleming?
Hi.
Councilmember Kelly? Councilmember Braithwaite?
Hi.
Here.
Councilmember? Councilmember Wen?
Here.
Councilmember Usman?
Here.
Councilmember Burns?
Here.
Councilmember Suffered?
Here.
And I just want to confirm, Councilmember Kelly is not here, right? Did not hear her.
She was here in APW, so I imagine she'll be.
Yes.
So we'll keep on checking the Zoom and make sure she gets, gets on the roll when she returns.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We do have a quorum, so we're going to proceed. Just for everyone's awareness, my understanding is that because of a change that occurred in state law, together with a proclamation that I made last week, we're able to have this meeting remotely without voting on any motion related to that. So we're just going to proceed remotely. The change and how we go about that is a reaction to a change in state law. I would again just ask that when council members want to get called on, use the raise your hand function. Otherwise, we'll be in a chaotic situation. And if everyone is able to have their camera on when they're speaking, I think that would be helpful as well, so that folks can follow what's, what is going on. That brings me to my public announcements and proclamations. I guess that kind of was part of that. I just also wanted to share that as of today, the city has, in keeping with what's been done in the city of Chicago, and Cook County, and Skokie, and some other communities, enacted a vaccination mandate for attendance at certain locations, particularly restaurants and bars and gyms. So there's more information about that on the webpage. But obviously, in light of the, frankly, pretty astonishing positivity numbers, certainly, but even also hospitalization numbers. I think that that was a prudent and important step. And I want to appreciate the community for, thank the community for your continued support of these measures and cooperation with them to ensure that we're all as safe as possible. Beyond that, Happy New Year. And that ends my announcements. Let me hand it over to the interim city manager for her public announcements.
Good evening, members of the city council. Kelly Ganderzki, interim city manager. I have just one announcement about parking, division vehicle immobilization. And I'm going to ask parking division manager, Michael Rivera, to just please give a statement about that.
Hi, good evening, members of the state council. Mike Rivera, parking manager for the city of Evanston. I just wanted to give a brief update that the Parking Services Department had worked with community engagement in the month of December to get out some information in e-news and in regards to immobilizations for unpaid parking citations. The city of Evanston has previously suspended immobilizations since March of 2020. And currently, we have amassed a very large list of debtors. Over 5,000 debtors are on that list. And we decided, as a regular order of business, to start immobilizations as of January 3rd of 2022. And in that communication, we put out a link so individuals can confirm how many citations they owe for themselves. There was also a link in the e-news that also provided information as to why a vehicle could become immobilized and what you have to do to get your vehicle removed from the immobilization list. So that is what we wanted to get updated today to the city council concerning the list. Thank you.
Councilmember Reed?
Thank you. Thank you, Kelly and Mike, for the update. I'm curious, one, so, well, one, I'd love to hear, Mike, if you can share how a person can be removed from that list. And I guess I'm also specifically curious, you know, with an equity lens in mind, for folks, you know, is there, are there any considerations, you know, with COVID hardship for not being on the boot list? Are we? Yeah, so maybe, Mike, if you can just go in a bit, to a bit more detail. And then also, specifically, when? I know, I think I heard you say that the announcement was made in late December. Is that correct?
It was in, it was in the December edition of e-news. I believe that might have been the first week of December.
Okay, so in the first week of December, we announced, say, we're going to start this again. And then January 3rd is when it happened. So I guess, so thank you for that. Then the other questions.
Sure, I'll be brief. So typically, a vehicle does not become boot eligible unless they have three, they have amassed three or more citations with a final determination amount owed. At that point, once we have the vehicles, they have reached that point.
I think we lost audio for Mike.
Mike, can you hear us? We're unable to hear you. Uh-oh.
While he's trying to reconnect, I can just say that we do have payment plans available for individuals. And the city is working with people that are indebted. The goal is not to boot. The goal is to try to get everybody back into compliance. So the finance team, along with the parking team, is working with individuals. Mike, do you have anything else to add? Are you frozen? I think he's having technical.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's pretty much it, Dan. So if someone is on this, you know, payment plan or whatever financing option is available, are they taken off of the boot eligibility, eligibility list as they're making payments? Or are they still boot eligible?
We're still, as long as they're compliant on the plan, we're working with everybody. And we won't boot. But if they're not compliant with the payment plan, then that's, it's a possibility to have their vehicle immobilized.
Okay, and then last question. Thank you, Mayor Bis, for indulging us. And how many boots have we issued since January 3rd?
Last I checked, we hadn't, we hadn't issued any.
Mike, are you able to, if you're back, can you confirm that?
Can you, can you hear me now, councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Yeah, so the goal life date was January 3rd. And due to the inclement weather, we, we made the proactive decision to not immobilize vehicles this week. So we haven't immobilized any vehicles the first week of January 3rd through today.
Okay, and I will just add, last thing is that I would love for, if we have 5,000 folks on this list, I'd love for us to, you know, understand where these households are. Again, is there a great number in the fifth ward and the eighth ward? You know, I know our two wards have the highest rates of poverty. And I would imagine that, you know, the tickets track that as well. And if there is a hardship, I'd love, you know, I think this is, if we can, you know, apply some ARPA funds to help, you know, helping folks pay city fees, especially. If there's money that's owed to us and we can use ARPA funds to cover that revenue, help bail people out and, you know, shore up the coffers here. I think that's a win-win for the city. So I'd just love to have that put on the, on the, on the table.
Sure, and we have been in, we have collaborated with the city of Evanston Collector's Office. And they're the ones that would administer the plans for us. And basically, we will follow what the model is that the water utility company, the water utility, basically administers for plans. So people definitely showing a hardship due to COVID or unemployment benefits or, you know, SSI benefits. Any people showing minimum financial responsibility for their home, they can definitely come in and apply for a payment plan. And we would also be willing to work with them to lower escalation fees that might have been added to the citations.
Can you describe how that process would play out if someone is low income or, you know, working person who couldn't afford that, that boot? How would that play out so that that person could avoid this procedure?
Well, that individual would need to come into the city of Evanston Collector's Office and.
And how would he or she know? I mean, what would be, would you first notify them by mail? What would be, I mean, would they just find out, oh, my God, I got a boot on my car?
Right. Well, when we, when we issue the letters to individuals, letting them know that they're boot eligible, we would, it would also say in the letter that they can call the city of Collector's Office for more information or payment plans. So that, that's something that they would have to do for themselves. They would have to make that, make that point of contact for themselves if they would need a payment plan.
Okay, so everybody gets a letter in the mail like a week or two weeks before?
No, we're not, no, we're not, we're not mass mailing people that are indebted to the city of Evanston for not paying parking citations at this point. What we're doing is going back to the list of individuals that already have been mailed in the past. So as, as people, as the list populates and people become eligible, then those individuals receive letters. This isn't something that we mass mail once a month or every six months or anything like that. This, this is an ongoing event. As people become eligible, then they receive the list.
This first one, I imagine, was a mass mailing, given that there were, it amassed since 2020.
Well, we've, we've always maintained a scofflaw list, but we currently have over 5,000 people on a scofflaw list today.
Oh, and so even during the pandemic, when we weren't doing, I'm sorry, Mayor Bis, I even said I was done and now I'm not. Even during the pandemic, we were issuing folks, prior to this, you know, reinstating the policy, we were issuing letters to let people know that they were potentially boot eligible?
Correct, correct. We were, we were following the same process we would normally do. We just weren't immobilizing vehicles for the past, you know, almost two years. March would be two years that we haven't immobilized a vehicle.
Okay, yeah. To councilmember Kelly's point, I think we should just have an update. And I apologize for opening the door for.
Go ahead.
That's okay. I also think we should put out, you know, as much as we can blast on the city website, because it is such an awful thing to get a boot on your car. And I think anything we can do to just say, you know, appeal here, you know, if you've received notice, anything we can do to apprise residents so that they can avoid this.
And definitely, I'll circle back with our community engagement team and see if we can continue to keep doing a monthly blast through the month of March, if that makes sense for you folks.
And I'd love to see a transit benefit, if possible, particularly for catching folks off guard and they still need to go to work. You know, you know, some kind of, you know, if we can provide as a part of the ARPA or something, you know, assistance so they can still get around, at least temporarily. You know, if this catches them at a bad time in the pay cycle. So their folks aren't losing jobs in this already tough time because they got their car booted.
Sure, that's a conversation we can defer to the city manager's office. Thank you, councilmember Reed.
Thank you, sir. And Kelly?
Okay, I know this is not a discussion, but I have a quick question, which is a yes or no. Are these letters also in Spanish that we're sending out to people, Mike?
I don't believe they are, but I'll have to follow up on that.
All right, can you put that on the list? And can we try to make sure we're translating, particularly, information like this?
We will do that.
Yes, we can do that. Thank you.
Thank you all. Ms. Ganderzki, is that the end of your grade? Next on the agenda is communications from the city clerk.
Hi, we only have a public comment from Evanston Live TV. So I just wanted to highlight that. That's been sent to the council. I also wanted to let everyone know that due to COVID-19 and my inability to be in the civic center, my kids are unfortunately sick. We do have to reduce clerk's office hours. We'll be following the Collector's Office hours from 10:00 to 3:00 for in-person services. And we're going to do that through, through the end of January until we hire new staff. And that will be in a newsletter. But that is all of my, my, my public, my comments for today. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Lindoza. For all of your kids. Very quick recovery. Thinking of, thinking of you. That brings us to public comment. Today, everyone who has signed up to give public comments will be given three minutes. We'll begin with Molly Hartenstein, who will be followed by Ray Friedman, and then Mike Vasilko. Is Ms. Hartenstein there?
I saw her drop off earlier.
Okay, well, we'll circle back then. So we'll start then with Ray Friedman, who will be followed by Mike Vasilko, and then Nicholas Davis.
Good evening, Mayor, city manager, city council. Happy New Year to everybody once again. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes. Okay. So first, I wanted to say, talk about city manager search. Last year, we have, seems a whole lot more participation of residents than we have this year. Wondering why that is? And why is it that we weren't able to hear from the 30, I guess, those 30 applicants? And why we weren't able to hear from any of them? When it came down to, I guess, nine, why weren't we able to hear from any of them? So once again, the residents need to be part of the process and the conversations and not just hear presentations. This is not the way you were talking about transparency and accountability is supposed to happen. Number two, I just want to say real quick that with the real bad weather that we had, I really am requesting that the city think about cleaning the alleys, the snow and the ice, for, I guess, three days. My alleys, my alley here, well, there's two, but they're, they're just sheets of ice. So first day, first night, I, I could barely get in my garage. I was slipping and sliding all over. It's, it's a safety hazard for, for everybody. So, I mean, I, I don't understand why the city can't throw some salt in the alleys, you know, and why you're leaving this up to the residents. To, I'm not going to salt the alleys. And, you know, I mean, that doesn't make sense. You have the snow plows and, you know, obviously, there's plenty of money here, which is my next topic, is A13. Talking about, this is 10 days into the new year, and you're talking about borrowing $10.9 million on a new general obligation bond to pay for, granted, they're valid, you know, valid expenses, no doubt. But those, I mean, to me, you, you have the money to spend on a project. You save the money, you have the money, you know how much money is coming in. We just increased the budget by $60 million. And now are you talking about borrowing another $10.9 million on general obligation bonds for projects that haven't even been done? And the general obligation bond hasn't been started. 15 seconds already? Okay. This is, there's a problem with that. So just so you all know, there's eight, eight different items on that $12.9 million that are for consultants. So consulting services for $625,000. I would think we can afford to put some salt in our alleys to make our alley safer. So thanks for your time and have a good night.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Mike Vasilko, followed by Nicholas Davis, and then Marvin Lindsey.
Thank you, Mayor Bis. So the first agenda item I want to mention is A8, the purchase of another vehicle. So over the past three or four years, I think the council has purchased nearly 100 vehicles at different times over that period. I can't believe we needed them all. But nonetheless, none of them have been electric vehicles. So Evanston kind of talks the talk. We pat ourselves on the back a lot about climate change initiatives. And we create a lot of documents, but no real physical action. Each new vehicle is an opportunity to finally start walking the walk. So I'd ask you to reject this purchase and find an EV vehicle that meets the criteria. To follow Ray, the new council members and the new mayor campaigned strongly on and were supported in large part on their promises for greater transparency. This council has proven to go backwards on transparency and seems to orchestrate the process dealing with many issues to avoid and restrict transparency and restrict citizen participation. The mayor and the council should have objected if, if a consultant proposed this process that you're following. But you should have objected to the city manager's selection process on behalf of your constituents. Rather, you chose to, you chose to limit citizen participation. The city manager process has not been transparent from the beginning. Evanston residents should have been involved in the selection process well before the final two candidates. The two candidates we saw yesterday, but we couldn't talk to, may be much better qualified than our last two city managers. But that's a pretty low bar to measure qualifications. I don't, I feel uninformed. Our ward hasn't had any discussions. Certainly no discussions about the city manager choices and process. We've had no meetings in the sixth ward and certainly no, like I said, no conversations on that subject. Three or four upcoming panel discussions later this week exclude the entirety of the city residents, except for a select few, a select few organizations. Why are these panel discussions private? Why were they not posted on the city calendar? Why are they closed to the public? Residents should have, at least be able to watch and listen live. And these discussions should also be recorded.
15 seconds.
I'm concerned about the two candidates who spoke about their relationship and prior experiences with the city of Chicago and Cook County. In my book, that's a negative, not a plus. Speaking to the council and to you, Mr. Mayor, your collective campaign promises for transparency have fallen quickly by the wayside. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Nicholas Davis, followed by Marvin Lindsey, and then Marcus Rivera.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
So I just wanted to articulate a situation as I see it with the hiring back of Chief Eddington. So it seems like, from what I can understand, this is the same chief who implemented stop and first policies in Evanston, where, as we know, that's weaponized against black community more than it is against anybody else disproportionately. And then highlight a couple instances that also happened like under this person's watch to understand why we are bringing the same person back that was not able to handle these other situations. So the first one, 2017, there was a 12-year-old who was arrested, actually filed into a Starbucks and arrested in the Starbucks for riding not on the bike, on the back of the bike, not actually controlling himself in and out of traffic. Parents weren't notified. It wasn't that he was explaining the severity of playing in traffic and the safety risk opposed to himself and left off of the warning. But our tax officer used to handcuff and arrest this kid and process him. He was also here with councilmember Reed in 2016, was unjustly harassed and arrested while he was trying to petition for city clerk. One of those officers involved with that arrest is still on a payroll today. He was here in 2015 when Dr. Crosby was beaten and arrested in charge of burglarizing his own car, even after the person on the 911 call, like during the call, stated that she might be racially profiling. She's not sure about a black man in a hoodie. None of the officers involved in these situations were asked to leave the department or discipline to the knowledge of the public. So there's no way that we can know these things are not going to happen again with the same officers. All the officers from Dr. Crosby's case still work with EPD right now. Anthony Correa, Brian Hicks, Sean O'Brien, Ivan Riza are all slated to make over $100,000 in 2022 from taxpayer dollars. And I also wanted to highlight something I found in Eddington where he talked about Evanston being a place where you'd be held accountable for your actions as a police officer. But in the same article, he said that it would be a tough nut to crack if an officer's case was unfounded, which a lot of cases are less unfounded. And that's their final resolution. And so I wanted to understand why this is an appointment that we're deciding to make. And also point out the person that made the appointment, city manager Ganderzki, that her appointment itself was like very questionable and talked about by a lot of Evanston residents. And just bring those things to light, understand why we're continuing to bring people in to the city who have already had a record of not doing what we asked and not doing the things that we're saying. We're trying to get on this progressive track and make Evanston more livable for people and be more equitable. But then people who have instituted policies that are directly against that are being brought back. And for some reason, they're going to act differently or in accordance with the beliefs that we say we have now. So, thanks.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Marvin Lindsey, followed by Marcus Rivera, and then Doreen Price.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Bis and members of Evanston City Council. My name is Marvin Lindsey, and I live in the eighth ward. I am also the CEO of the Community Behavioral Healthcare Association of Illinois Dastin Springfield. Our association represents 90 mental health and substance use providers across the state who provide an array of lifesaving services to thousands of children, adults, daily, including living room models. As an Evanston homeowner and taxpayer, I support the city investing in a living room model for Evanston's residents. From my personal, professional experience, I also support that Evanston partner with Turning Point Behavioral Health, Peer Services, Impact, and Trilogy, who have proven track records of operating a living room model and providing quality services to individuals with mental health conditions. Across Illinois, during the last two years or during the COVID pandemic, the number of people in mental health crisis has increased to over 45%. Many of these individuals can be served in living room models rather than in emergency rooms, tying up law enforcement time, and also helping to avoid unnecessary hospitalizations. Mental distress during the pandemic Mental distress during the pandemic is occurring against a backdrop of high rates of mental illness. And substance use that existed prior to the current crisis. Currently, there are twenty one living room models in cities across the state. And I suspect that they will increase as more cities understand the huge benefits to their residents in the city. I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank. Sorry. Thank you very much. Um. I will learn how to operate a mute button at some point. The next speaker will be Marcus Rivera, followed by Doreen Price and then Laura Montenegro. Is Marcus Rivera in the zoom? So let's move on for the moment at least. Uh, the next speaker will be Doreen Price. Followed by Laura Montenegro and then, um, uh, former council member Anne Rainey.
Um, good evening. Um, uh, I would like to speak about, um, the living room. For the living room in Evanston, uh, to provide immediate care to Evanstonians in mental health crises. Um, along with that, um, knowing and experiencing trauma, I would, um, like to urge. That the people involved, which would normally be trauma-informed and educated as well. I'd say the community at large would benefit from understanding what caused it. And helping others who have it, uh, self-identify because it's not something that's easy to talk about. And I know we have a new mental health board, so I'm sure they'll be doing more active things in that regard. But in terms of the council itself, I really plead with each and every one of you. To learn more about PTSD and that multiple. Uh, generational trauma is real in terms of we know what we know about DNA. And how DNA can be modified by environmental cues. So, um, that's the change in the DNA is something that is makes things a lot harder. And so preventing trauma to begin with is good. So anyone dealing with Evanston residents. Should be trauma-trained interfacing because they don't know who they'll be talking to that may need a helping hand and be able to discuss it. In terms differently than they're normally used to, for example, enforcement. And that's it for now, except to say that this is a great initiative and I support it with all my heart. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, the next speaker will be Laura Montenegro, followed by Anne Rainey and then Molly Hartenstein. Is Laura Montenegro? In the zoom? Um, all right, we'll move on then to Anne Rainey, who will be followed by Molly Hartenstein.
Should I go ahead, Jonathan?
Um, Anne, are you?
Yes, yes, I I unmuted myself. Can you hear me?
Yep, sure can.
Okay, um. Well, I wanna I wanna discuss and I I have to read what I'm going to say. Let's see. It's item fifteen and sixteen. Um, I'll try not to read it. First of all, I wanna thank you all for doing this and being on Zoom so we can all participate. Um, I want to support these two liquor license issues in the eighth ward. Uh, one is the Shell gas station, and I want to say that over the years since the station has been open. It is spotless. Uh, the owners are a family and they have contributed immensely to, um, various. Uh, organizations and foundations in the city of Evanston. And they have never had any trouble. They're open twenty four hours a day. And so, you know, there's all sorts of possibilities there. And, uh, they've just never had any trouble. They have they are very good neighbors to Gordon Foods, to the, um. To the Sports Dome, et cetera. And I encourage you, I was at the Liquor Control Board meeting in person.
I'm I'm having trouble hearing, uh, is is everyone?
Yes. It's frozen.
Frozen, Mayor.
Same. Um. Anne, can you hear us?
And they did support it. And that was the original. My time up? Is my time up? Yeah.
No, I just you cut out for quite a while. Uh, you were you were frozen and your audio was off.
Yeah, just as you were switching away from, uh, the the show of the gas station, the audio cut out.
Um. Uh, I, well. Um, Aldrin Reed is supporting this one hundred percent, and I really appreciate that. They tried to open on numerous occasions. Uh, but COVID hit. Um, this is the family that owns Libertad and Skokie. I'm sure many of you have been there. Their food is fabulous. Um, this was the first police outpost, the city purchased this building maybe twelve, thirteen years ago. And it has, uh, been empty since, uh, the other. User left us and I can't think. Of anything better that could happen. The Howard Ward Eight has just reopened after being closed for probably a year and a half. And so I'm so grateful that, uh, Aldrin Reed is supporting this and thank you very much for everybody's support. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry about the connectivity issues there. Um, but thank you for, um, for pushing through them. Uh, the next speaker will be Molly Hartenstein.
I I did, Jonathan, I did send.
Hello, Council. Um, I'm here to make a statement on behalf of Evanston Fight for Black Lives. For over a year and a half, Evanston Fight for Black Lives has demanded that Evanston's elected officials. Defund the Evanston Police Department and invest in life-giving institutions. For over a year and a half, we have been dismissed and lied to. During the summer of twenty twenty, the majority of sitting council members supported the allocating police funds social services. The following November, the same city council voted to pass a budget that did not cut police funding. This spring, we elected a new mayor and city council and hoped they would implement the progressive changes they spoke about on the campaign trail. Nevertheless, we speak at the city council meeting today with little tangible progress made on defunding the Evanston Police Department. Just weeks ago, we saw former Evanston Police Chief Richard Eddington sworn in as the new interim police chief. Eddington was previously employed as police chief between two thousand seven and two thousand eighteen, during which a series of reports of. Police violence and excessive force were released. While we understand that no police chief can dismantle the violence, anti-blackness and harm that are inherent to policing. The appointment of Police Chief Eddington fails to deliver the progressive change and justice that Evanston residents were promised. We would like to once again echo the words of countless community members at the special city council meeting on December twentieth. Real violence reduction and prevention must focus on challenging conditions that create violence. Poverty, racism, educational disparities, underfunded after-school programming, a lack of affordable housing and job training and more. We must stop investing in violent systems of domination and tackle violence at its root. To do this, we cannot regress by hiring folks who have proven adversarial to this approach. We must defund EPD and invest in reparations, educational programming, housing and more. It is only by taking care of each other that a just Evanston is possible. Uh, we urge that you rethink hiring Police Chief Eddington, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Um. The only two remaining people requesting to speak are people I don't do not see in the zoom, but we'll try again. Uh, there are Marcus Rivera. And Laura Montenegro. Is either Marcus Rivera or Laura Montenegro, uh, available to give public comment? Seeing that they are not, uh, that concludes this evening's public comment. And we move on to special orders of business, beginning with SP one, uh, which will be an item for discussion only. Uh, would someone? Uh, like to make a motion so that we can have a discussion on item SP one.
Remove SP one for discussion.
Second.
Councilmember Fleming moves, uh, item SP one for discussion. Councilmember Reed seconds. Uh, so this is a discussion, um, that is built on a lot of work that's been done by a lot of different people in the community and on council. Um, coming out really of the Alternative Emergency Response Subcommittee that council members, uh. Uh, Revel and Fleming were spearheading. Um, and so to to begin the discussion, we have a few different, uh, speakers from. Uh, nonprofit partners who have been heavily involved, both in that work and in this outgrowth of it. Um, to kind of contextualize the situation. So I'd like to begin by asking Patty Capuch from Impact Behavioral Health. Uh, to share a little bit about the work that's been done and and what challenges that, uh, raises for the community.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Biss and members of the city council. Uh, as Mayor Biss said, I'm Patty Capuch. I'm the executive director of Impact Behavioral Health Partners. Impact is an Evanston-based nonprofit. We've been providing services to adults with mental illness in the Evanston community for over thirty three years. But I'm here tonight, though, as my role as a member of the Alternative Emergency Response Subcommittee. Just to give a brief overview of our work and offer support for the living room model of care in Evanston that we're talking about tonight. So the Alternative Emergency Response Subcommittee, I know it's a handful, or the Alternative nine one one committee. Was established following initial discussions by the Human Services Committee over the summer of twenty twenty. And the committee was convened with the following directives. Uh, we were responsible for developing a non-police response to members of the community who needed immediate support. Um, not, of course, including life-saving medical situations or things like that. We were to review similar programs around the US. Assess local needs, develop response protocols, develop staff qualifications and scheduling. And then make program recommendations to you at the city council. The committee would then continue to convene and review the program implementation. We track progress, review outcomes, and then we make recommendations for program adjustments and long-term adoption. So the committee, we held our first meeting in September of twenty twenty. And immediately, the committee recognized that the needs of the community around mental health, um. Are and continue to be exacerbated exacerbated by the COVID nineteen pandemic. Uh, normal gathering places were closed to the public and many agencies were working remotely. Uh, for the safety of their staff and also for the clients they served. And we also knew that police were getting many calls regarding folks in mental health crisis. So our committee consisted of members and representatives from city council, police, fire, nine one one call center. Business community members, various nonprofits with experience in mental health, substance use, youth, uh, justice system and homelessness. We also had community members and advocates for reform. We met with different agencies to gather information, to assess what are emergency mental health services that already existed in Evanston. And we tried to identify the gaps. Some of those agencies included Immediate St. Francis, Trilogy, Turning Point and Jocelyn Center. We also met with outreach workers from the city of Evanston. Members of the police force and staff from the nine one one call center. To talk about the types of calls they received, uh, some of the issues facing residents. And what types of calls police responded to that could potentially have been referred to mental health professionals. We also looked at alternative policing models in other areas of the country. And we examined what would be successful and what could potentially work here in the city of Evanston. Our committee then made decisions regarding what our model could look like and we issued a request for proposal or RFP. And we didn't really have a great response to that, so we reached out to a few of the agencies that we, uh, had presented. To talk about whether or not they felt they could be a good fit for that program, um, that we were designing. But it was at this time that the committee learned that the state. Was looking to expand mental health services and make a greater financial commitment and investment in mobile crisis and response. Um, it also appeared that there might be some ARPA funding available for mental health resources. Uh, we'd had agency presentations from Turning Point and Jocelyn Center, and they had included information on the living room model. Which is a program that's a possible alternative to emergency room visits for those who are experiencing psychiatric emergencies. Uh, Turning Point has been providing a living room in Skokie for more than ten years and had really great outcomes. In terms of keeping their guests from going to the emergency department. Uh, Turning Point also informed us that they collaborate with other Evanston-based nonprofits around mental health, substance use and employment. And as the committee also talked to Trilogy about the expansion for mobile crisis. Um, we were then informed that they had received a statewide grant. I think actually they start their mobile crisis today, if I'm not mistaken. So so we thought that in partnership with bringing a living room model to Evanston. Could really help us accomplish the directives that we'd set out to tackle right from the very beginning. Um, our committee understands the value of this model. And we will continue to work and support the community around the living room model moving forward. Um, I I know that was a lot of information. It's a kind of condensed recap of the work that we're doing. I want to thank you for your time, uh, listening, and if you have questions, please let me know. And as Mayor Biss said, we have a couple of. Folks on the council who are members of the committee and we could answer your questions. So thank you.
Thank you so much. That was, um. Very helpful and it sort of brought us to the point that the next speaker is gonna pick up from, and that's Chris, Chris Mayer from Impact, uh, sorry, from Trilogy, uh, Behavioral Healthcare. Um, which is, uh, a nonprofit that. Received one of those state grants to, as you indicated, stand up those mobile response units. Um, so Chris, are you there?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Biss. Um, my name is Chris Mayer and I'm the clinical director of Trilogy's Alternative Crisis Response Program. Which as of today, our soft launch provides community-based mobile response to mental health emergencies. I'm here to present briefly on our program and the state grant under which we're operating. As well as how a living room program in Evanston would support our activities. Um, as Mayor Biss mentioned, Trilogy is a community mental health center that has been in operation for fifty years. Covering Evanston, Skokie and the city of Chicago. Um, throughout the state, the traditional crisis care system has consisted primarily of hospital-based crisis workers. And police fire EMS that respond to calls in the community. Um, as Patty mentioned, increases in suicide and overdose rates. Throughout the pandemic have led the state to introduce funding for statewide mobile crisis response programs. Under Grant Program five ninety. The benefit of these programs is that they provide immediate access to trauma-informed crisis care. Whenever and wherever people may need it, reducing cost to the system, unnecessary hospitalizations. Traumatization and improving clinical outcomes. Trilogy and Turning Point have both received funding from the state to implement mobile crisis response programs in Evanston. Once fully scaled, Trilogy's program will have a twenty-person department to respond to crises in the community. Twenty-four, seven, three sixty-five. In addition to covering all of Evanston, Trilogy will be serving part servicing parts of Skokie, Rogers Park, West Ridge. Edgewater and Uptown. One of the components of an evidence-based crisis care system that the state model has not implemented. Is site-based facilities where mobile response teams can bring people in crisis who would benefit from leaving their current environment. And coming to a place that is safe and supportive. Living room programs, which Anne Rainey from Turning Point will discuss in more depth. Provide an excellent, cost-effective and clinically sound way to provide the site-based support. To provide a hypothetical example of how the system would work. Someone may be feeling suicidal, so they call Trilogy's crisis line. A mobile response team dispatches to their location and engages to build rapport. Provide an assessment and determine what is going on clinically. And develop a safety plan to take measures to prevent escalation of crisis and hospitalization. If the participant's current environment is not safe or conducive to the resolution of crisis. Or if the ideation is significant enough that leaving them alone in the community is not a good move. But has not risen to the point where hospitalization is necessary. Living rooms can provide a resource for further support and safety.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um. And as Chris indicated, the next speaker and the last speaker will be Anne Rainey, um, without an I in her last name. Who is the CEO of Turning Point, uh, who. As was indicated, uh, have operated a living room in Skokie for the last decade, um, and. As a result, have a lot of expertise in this field. Uh, Anne?
Thank you. Thank you, Mary Biss and and council members for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. And I also want to offer deep gratitude to my colleagues from Peer Services, Impact Behavioral Health Partners and Trilogy. We've always worked well together, but for the past eighteen months. Our organizations have spent hours working on a model for alleviating mental health crises in Evanston. I'm very proud of our commitment to this project, to each other and to the communities we serve. We are so much more thoughtful and responsive and strong when we work together. So what is a living room? A living room is a place for psychiatric respite, where any adult in crisis is welcome. Services are free. The setting is like our own living rooms at home with soft lights, comfortable seating, music, places to rest. And at Turning Point, even an aquarium. And what happens in this space? Well, guests, those are the the titles that we give to people who come in crisis, guests. Are screened for safety and they're then welcomed by a recovery support specialist. An adult who has a lived experience of mental illness. And these recovery support specialists are very, very willing to share their own stories of their recovery. And their problem solving and their thoughts about how our guests might get through their crises. What happens next might depend upon a guest's description of what they need and how they are feeling. Formal methods such as cognitive behavioral approaches or motivational interviewing might be offered. So might a lesson in mindfulness or a conversation about problem solving, or as I said. Sharing experiences of crises. So why is this living room model so important? I want to share five answers to that question. The first one is. Because it demonstrates respect during a time of crisis. Priority is given to hospitality. Providing an environment that promotes respect, calm and skilled response. And precise attention to what the guest wants and needs. It also provides immediate access to care. It's a no-cost option for people in crisis. Available on a walk-in or call-in basis when they need help. The second reason this model is so important is because it is successful. Our living room at Turning Point in Skokie just celebrated its tenth anniversary, as Mayor Biss noted. And throughout this time, we have maintained a ninety-nine percent success rate. At helping our guests resolve their issues so they do not have to seek a higher level of care. Because this is a confidential. I'm sorry, got to back up. Um. Because it's confidential and restorative. Guests can return to their homes, their families, their jobs and their daily lives. The next reason this model is so important is because it provides the right response. The next reason this model is so important is because it provides the right response to the right place at the right time. Guests don't go to hospital emergency departments. First responders can focus on public safety, accidents, and emergencies that require their attention and expertise. And finally, this model is important because it saves money. There is a savings of 87% when we compare the average cost of a living room visit to the average cost of an emergency department visit. This represents an annual savings of $490,000 for our living room in Skokie over the past year. Thank you for this opportunity to bring a life-changing alternative to mental health crisis care in Evanston. Thank you to Impact and Trilogy and Peer and Connections, our colleagues and friends. We are so eager to build on the strong foundation we've established and to open a living room in Evanston.
Thank you. Thank you to, to all three of you, to Patty and to Chris and to Anne. Before, before I open it up to questions from, from council, I just want to give a little bit of sort of nuts and bolts of what's, what's being proposed here. The, the, there's been a number of different site visits to potential locations. And the, the current proposal that's described in the packet that I think made the most sense among the different options that we looked at is a, a house, and it's literally a house, it sort of looks like a house when you get there, that's just behind St. Francis Hospital, that's owned by AMITA, that would require some renovation. And so the idea is that the, the city could rent it for a, you know, literally a nominal fee, maybe a dollar or something for the initial year. As the tenant, it would then make sense for us to consider utilizing ARPA funding for the renovation, which would be required. And then this group of providers, led by Turning Point, which has this experience, but also in partnership with Impact and Trilogy and Peer and AMITA itself, together with perhaps others such as Connections and the Jocelyn Center, would be, would be providing these services. I think there's, it might well make sense for the city out of ARPA funding to support the operating cost in the initial year. And I think pretty much everyone I've discussed this with has had the feeling that it doesn't make sense for us to utilize ARPA funds with the expectation that it'll then be a city responsibility over the long term to continue funding this. And so there's a number of options to provide funding. We've had very encouraging discussions with Cook County. There is a state living room grant that will be rebid in a few years. There's obviously also other potential funders. But what, what I think the city is likely to be asked to do, obviously there's no vote today, but what we might be asked to do would be to, to support the renovations and then some portion of the first year's operating cost to get this stood up and in a position where it would be ready then to rely on other funding streams moving forward. With that, let me open it up and see if anyone on council has any questions. Councilmember Fleming?
Thank you. Well, one, before we start, I do want to thank all the members of the Alternatives to 911 Subcommittee. As Patty said, we, we met actively for over a year. The committee, just to be clear, is still together. We took some time off just to kind of work on these kind of things behind the scenes. So we didn't really have weekly information to provide, but the committee is still committed to coming back together. So who was not mentioned, Marie McDonald, who just retired from being executive director at Peer, Evangeline Seemark, who's a citizen, Kristin Kennard, who represented the Moran Center, Patty obviously is here, James Barnett, who's the outreach manager at Connections, and then Angela Vala Bonis, which I'm sure that's wrong, but she's a business owner. She owns Creative Co-op in downtown. So just to kind of add a couple of things Patty did not mention. So as I said, the committee is still committed to meet. Evangeline, in her capacity, she wrote like a four-page community engagement, community education strategy that we were prepared to work with our Alternatives 911 Response staff to implement. So they are still committed to doing that. Obviously, both of these services would be new, need lots of community education about how to reach people, what they do and all that. So that is something the committee is still planning or would like to do, as well as, you know, the piece Patty mentioned about following up with the service and making sure it is actually working in the way in which we need it to work for future contractual things. Also, I just want to mention that we did have the, we still do have the $200,000 that was allocated a couple of years ago for this. So we could think about how to use that. I know there might be, there's still a desire to support Chris and his team at Trilogy with having some staff that we would employ who would be the peer services. And so there's a whole model of care where you have, you, you know, best practices have a peer support. So people who are recovering, have life experience with any kind of addiction or mental health, who actually would work with our outreach teams. So we do think that's another component we want to investigate if possible. There was talk about a car for the mobile response. And so that's another thing we might want to think about using that funding for in the future. But just want to be clear that the work of the committee is not finished. If this council still would like to have them meet, they are willing to do that. Eleanor and I can work through that. And then the last point I want to bring up is, well, the point about Jocelyn, as Mayor mentioned, Jocelyn has a living room or has some mental health services up in north of us. They are going to be super important if we bring them to the table because they provide youth sports. And we heard over and over that having some youth mental health is super important. And, and Turning Point and Trilogy have lots of skill sets, but they don't really, in their capacity right now, do a lot with youth. And Jocelyn has an entire youth services program, so I don't want us to forget them. And then the last thing to Mr. Davis and to Evanston Fight for Black Lives, they are correcting their call for defunding the police. And actually, our committee came out of the call for defunding the police that we heard at council several years ago. There were some conversations at Human Services. And from there, we looked at how do we provide an alternative to police response for some of our citizens, which led to our committee. But there was always kind of that call and our work that was guided by the, the residents who asked about defunding the police. So we never really got there. As Patty mentioned, this kind of contract from the state came up. But we, we definitely need more funding. I definitely, obviously, I'm, I'm leaving, but I'm definitely supportive of us looking at how to get more funding if we think, if this council thinks we want to take that from a police budget at some point in time, because it is going to cost a lot of money. And as we all know, mental health needs continue to escalate and our responses continue to decline just based on funding parameters. So I want to throw that in there. Thank you, Mayor Bess.
Thank you. Councilmember Abell?
Well, I just would like to add to Councilmember Fleming's comments about the committee to say, first of all, Councilmember Fleming chaired the committee. She did just a really wonderful job of, first of all, identifying committee members and recruiting them for the committee. We had, and just really providing tremendous leadership for this whole year-plus process that we've been in, engaged in. And as you've heard tonight, we've had wonderful participation from so many community organizations and a lot of interest just from regular community members in our meetings. And I think that broad community support that we saw throughout this whole process is going to really be, it provides a really wonderful foundation, I think, for the effort going forward, both for supporting Trilogy and ultimately Turning Point, if they have, in terms of a crisis response program, and also setting up the living room and really making that a key part of our community response. So it's, it's been really gratifying to see where we are now after getting started in 2020. I'm, I'm very encouraged about where we're going in Evanston. And then just the whole, the whole country seems to be recognizing the need to, as Anne Rainey mentioned, get the right response to the right person, to the right place at the right time. I'm just really excited to see us move forward with this, with our living room and support the program going forward.
Next will be Councilmember Burns, followed by Newsma.
Yeah, just first wanted to, to thank my colleagues, who I believe started this work during the last term. And, you know, I've, I've tried to do my part to, to, to add some value to the conversation. And under the, the leadership, since I've been in office of the Mental Health Task Force, some of the members of that task force are here with us tonight. You know, this is a, a, a personal issue to me in that, you know, my teenage and, and early twenties, I struggled with mental health issues, in particular depression, dealt with depression and, and anxiety attacks. And thankfully, it wasn't severe to the point that I was institutionalized because of it. But it certainly led to some, some voluntary emergency room visits where I did not feel like I ever received the, the support I needed. And, and after a while, there was this stigma that I felt every time I went in that this isn't a place for you, that we don't have the services for you and your situation is not an emergency, you're not going to die, you should leave here, right? That was the, the feeling I got entering that space. And I'm, and I'm sure others who have, have struggled with anxiety attacks, panic attacks, et cetera, have also felt similar feelings in emergency rooms. So this is something that's deeply personal to me, which is why, again, under the leadership of the Mental Health Task Force, I've gone out to all the living room sites that, that, that were available to meet with us recently. So, you know, Turning Point being one, and went out to Jocelyn Center in Northfield and physically visited that site, as well as physically visited the Noni site in LaGrange. And, and LaGrange being, I think, one of the larger ones. Turning Point was pretty big as well. But I, I, I'm really excited about the, the program. I think it can work perfectly in tandem with the mobile crisis response that, that Trilogy is contracted by the state to provide here in Evanston and more broader than Evanston as well as they, as they described. I would say my, my only, and I'll preface this by saying, you know, I ask my colleagues just to be a little patient with some of the newer council members who weren't able to participate in some of those discussions, but do want to, do have some opinions on this matter. And, and mine really boils down to making sure that, that it's the right size. So many of the centers, the living room centers, I would imagine, were, were created at a time when mental health treatment wasn't what it is today. As I think somebody said, there's been this real surge of focus and attention, rightfully so, on mental health treatment. And I think as Councilmember Fleming just also mentioned that there is, the need has escalated. And I think in a place like Evanston where we have mobile crisis, you know, mobile intervention coming to Evanston, where we have a, a robust social service agency that will make referrals to this living room, I think it needs to be a bit larger than some of the other sites that I've seen. Again, in Turning Point being one, that was, I think, even larger than what we're looking at here. I, I did, I was able to pull it up on Google Map and the overall site is large. The bungalow is, is one floor, but it has a really nice backyard. My, my questions really are, one, there's a, there's some open space next to the site that's kind of shaped in a two-triple triangle type parcel. Is that also owned by St. Francis? Or is that owned by someone else?
I definitely don't know the answer to that question. And I don't know that anyone from AMITA is on this call. But that's, if, assuming that I'm looking in the zoom, I believe they're not. So that's something that we can work into and get back to.
Yeah, so that, that would be my question is, you know, one is, pulling up my notes here, there's a, again, there's a parcel next to the site that is vacant and wondering if it is owned by St. Francis or no matter whom it's owned by, if there's an opportunity for us to expand the living room into that space as well. And I, and I, I should say this, that I'm looking at Google Map. It might be an old, you know, map view, so I don't know if it's something there now for still vacant. But that's a question I have. And then also, is, is the only option to lease the property, is there a sale option? Not that we would go in that direction, but I'm just curious about where AMITA, St. Francis is. Are they only willing to lease? Are they willing to consider selling the property? Can, can the renovations go beyond that? And can we redevelop the site into a center where we're not limited by the floor design of a bungalow, but we can think a lot bigger than that? So again, can it go beyond renovations into redevelopment on the site, even, even under the lease option? And, and then as a zoning matter, is, if we did kind of build a facility, redevelop into a facility, is that area zoned correctly for it? And, and then just curious about what some of the monthly unique visits are at, at Turning Point at its highest point, because I know there was a, a down period. And I, I think I saw in the memos, 288 visits. And we had a question even when we toured to say, is that number unique visits? And I don't think it was. So I'm just, I'm curious at Turning Point's peak in Skokie, what the unique visits, annual unique visits were. And that is all. Thank you.
Let, let me answer the questions I can and then hand it over to Anne for the questions she can answer. And that may cover everything, it may not. The one I know for sure, because I looked it up, is the zoning. The built, the bungalow is, it's zoned like the hospital. It doesn't, the zoning doesn't sort of know the difference. So that, that's pretty straightforward. You know, AMITA's interest here is, is not like a real estate play. Like, they, they want to be a partner. They see this as beneficial to them. If this works properly, it relieves pressure on their emergency department in a pretty serious way. And so they're, they're not sort of leasing it for the rent. They're trying to be a partner and standing this thing up and making it work. Would they be unwilling to purchase it if that were the direction folks wanted to go? To, to allow someone to purchase it, I don't know. I, I can't speak to that. But I think they, they really want to be at the table and they see this as part of what they're trying to accomplish as well.
And just to jump in, just so you, it's, it's clear. I'm, I'm only thinking about if, if the lease agreement limits us on how we can redevelop the site. If we're, yeah, limited to the bungalow as is, or can we go beyond that in the current, you know, in the proposed lease agreement?
Yeah. I know that Laura and Shane are both on the call and they, they participated in one of the site visits. Certainly, in the, in the conversations I've had with the facilities folks from AMITA, they've never indicated, here's what you can do, here's what you can't do. But I have to say, the implication was that we wouldn't be talking about tearing the thing down and building something totally different. And so I certainly don't feel comfortable committing at this moment on behalf of them that they're, that they're willing to go with, with anything.
Understood.
I think it'd be interesting to hear from Anne and the others about kind of what different, what size means and what, what different models might mean as well and what the, you know, the cost benefit of doing something like that is. But I know that, I see Laura just turned on her camera. Did you want to jump in, Laura?
Sure. No, I would echo what you said, that we were trying to look at this in terms of a minimalist cost investment and utilizing space that was essentially available with minor updates. And for that reason, we just did not even discuss that with AMITA. That would have to be a separate conversation. I wasn't sure which lot Councilmember Burns was referring to, but basically the bungalow is just included, it's not a separate PIN number from the hospital. It's just hospital property. And anything to the north or west of it is just hospital property. And everything to the east and south, I think, is owned by private residents. If I'm, I'm just on the Cook County tax portal, that's what it looks like.
I'm just trying to make sure I'm looking at the right thing, because what I'm looking at has an alley. I, I'm, I don't know what direction this is, but on one side of it is an alley and the other side of it is, is that kind of open lot that I'm talking about. So I don't know if I'm looking at the wrong house.
I'm not sure. The house itself is in the southeast corner of the hospital property. And there's like, it's on a diagonal driveway street that hooks into Elmwood. So the house has an Elmwood address. And north of it is a vacant area.
And, and the answer may be that St. Francis owns it, but yeah, well, we can figure that out.
Thank you, Laura. Anne, did you want to jump in?
I do. And I do remember Councilmember Burns, when you visited us, we, we were excited about the idea of bringing other organizations into a space and working cooperatively. And I've always dreamed of having a sort of incubator space where if someone came in- if someone came into the living room with concerns about drug use, we would have a peer services member there to talk to them and if they were having, if they had unstable housing, we might have a connections staff member and workforce impact. And, and one of the things that I, I didn't share, but I, I think it would be a good time to share it is I want to say that Impact and Peer are working out of our Skokie building right now. It's one of their sites and so we're used to this sort of thing. And I, I do I do have a, a dream of building a facility where we could think about what's needed and then seed people there. On the other hand, I, I, I think that when we saw the, the building, the bungalow at St. Francis, it felt right. It felt like the kind of of welcoming place that a living room would be really suited for. And it does have a little more space. So that's, those are my thoughts about space. But, but in terms of your specific question, we had 290 unique visits to our Turning Point site in FY '21. So that would be July of '20 to June of '21. That was during COVID. We were only open for 25 hours a week. We're now open 56 hours a week. So I think we'll see a, a change in those numbers. And what we're proposing in Evanston is that 56 hour week. Currently in Skokie, we're open from 12 noon until eight o'clock at night every day. The other thing that I should mention is the average length of a living room stay is two and a half hours. So this is a situation where we don't rush people to leave. They tend to want to stay for a while. I think, I think both the expectation that they can settle in and be comfortable and also our willingness to wait for them really adds the efficacy of this program.
And I, I just, I just, this is the final thing I'll say is that, again, I, I think there's something to the fact that some of the other facilities were created at a time when there wasn't as much respect and, or attention and respect around the importance of this work. And now it is. And so I just want to make sure that we're not we can have a different origin story. I know there's a lot of nonprofits that are born out of houses and church basements and, but you know, that doesn't have to be the origin story here. We can create something bigger, better that that, that addresses the needs of this community that has has, you know, been underserved and that's struggling, especially during this pandemic. So but thank you, Anne and Mayor Bis for entertaining these questions that is on.
Thank you. Next is Councilmember Newsma followed by Wynn. And I, I saw Councilmember Kelly had her hand up at one point, it's back down now, but if, if you want to speak, he'll be right behind Councilmember Wynn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be happy to share my thoughts here, which will echo a lot of what has already been said, but I'm really supportive of this concept and I just want to say thank you to everyone that's, that's been involved. Thanks especially to folks like Patty and Chris and Anne for the work you're doing in this space every day on an ongoing basis. I think the world needs more people like you, but, and also thanks to the council members, Councilmember Fleming and Councilmember Revel for kind of bringing us along to this point. So I am absolutely supportive of this. And I think this is a perfect use of ARPA money to not only, you know, invest in the upfront capital expenses, but I have no problem you know, fronting some initial operating money, but as Mayor Bis said in his introductory statements, I want to make sure that we have long-term sources of revenue identified so that this whole thing doesn't go off the rails in a, in a year or two when the ARPA money runs out. So I know you're already working on that. In, in terms of an ARPA context, and somewhat as an aside here, I think this is also an indication that we need to use some of that ARPA money to invest in economic development so we can have some ongoing sources of revenue for our community that we can use to support good, good work like the like the living room concept. So I'm also, I also want to talk about the partnerships and we've, we've mentioned a lot of different organizations here. Ameda, Turning Point, Trilogy, Impact, Peer Connections, Jocelyn, not to mention the city of Evanston. So I would want to be clear moving forward, whose living room this is from a, a management and administration standpoint. So we don't find ourselves pointing fingers at each other at some point down the road when individuals who are involved at this point have moved on to other roles and maybe other organizations. So I'd want to make sure we are fairly clear as to who's in charge of what and who's responsible for what. Also talking about partnerships, I, this is a question maybe that some of the folks can answer tonight, but what role would the Evanston Police Department and the Evanston Fire Department, our current public safety, you know, not the alternative to 911, but what you get when you call 911 today. What role would they have in sending people to the living room? It's, there would, there would have to be some communication, some coordination there. So has this been part of the discussion so far?
Let me first answer your previous question. So the answer to the previous question about kind of who's responsible would in this proposed model be Turning Point? With, you know, yes, these are the relationships and deep partnership, but really it would be operated by Turning Point with the responsibility that comes with. And part of the purpose of having the city take control of the property for the initial year is to enter into memorandum of understanding with the different groups to lay out clearly in black and white, who has what responsibility and who's accountable for what. So we don't wind up in the situation you described. I think in a utopian world contemplated by the new state law, the 911 dispatch system across Illinois will be changed so that the police won't wind up fielding calls that are more proper than understood as mental health calls. I think we understand realistically that this is not, there's not a switch that somebody can flip somewhere that's going to make that happen. And in reality, there's going to be plenty of overlap and this, this would have to be done in partnership with the police and it would be, I think, a really, really critical resource. I think for those those of you who've done ride-alongs with, with our police, certainly when I did, I found myself, you know, I was only in the car for five hours, but spent a lot of time really wishing that there was an appropriate place to bring someone experiencing a mental health crisis. And so I think this could be a really critical resource.
Here, Miss, back in time in there too, in terms of the research we did as a committee. Part of our plan, if we had actually run the alternative response model was to work with, to bring in, Eleanor, help me out, what are their names? CAHOOTS. The agency that's been doing this forever, they now do training. And so we had already matched them up with our 911 dispatch team to talk through, doing some training of our dispatch staff in terms of how they can better triage calls that come in to know if they are police, fire, you know, so on and so forth. And then part of our plan was to have them obviously work with the 911 response team to figure out just transport and all. Now, what we, what we talked about before Chris was here, when we talked to Trilogy about the contract, we also talked about outfitting the response team with cars, which would also have our police kind of mobile units in them. And so if they did respond to a call that needed, actually police or fire, they could, you know, be in touch with folks very, you know, very quickly as well as police and fire responding, they could be in touch with our mobile response people, because we know there's going to be, you know, there's always overlap, I would assume. Obviously, now that the state's taking that over, Chris is working with the state, Chris correct me wrong, for a 988 number or some other number that the state would kind of run to help field calls. But I do think we still need to think through how we can train our 911 dispatchers to just, again, better triage calls so they know who to send out. And then Chris, or Eleanor can fill us in, but Chris can speak more to how the state is kind of rolling their response team out, because since he officially kind of is working under the state's purview, I'm sure there's some legalese there between the state working with our 911 calls.
Yeah, so actually nationwide, this 988 number is rolling out, which is a mental health crisis number that anyone nationwide can call for telephonic crisis support. And in Illinois, that number is going to be directly connected to these mobile response teams throughout the state. And so that doesn't necessarily mean 911 diversion. That's sort of a separate choice that someone is making to call that number as opposed to 911. So the state's program, as they conceptualize, doesn't necessarily involve 911 diversion. But it also doesn't limit communities from working with their programs to set that up. It's just not necessarily a part of it.
But so 988 is a number you would call for yourself or maybe a family member. What number would a resident call if they observed somebody on the street who appears to be in mental health crisis?
So they could call that number. I think that's one of our concerns about what the implementation of that number will look like is because so many mental health calls come from, you know, third parties like that, that they will still rely on calling 911. You know, I think there's a fair number of Evanston residents that, you know, are sort of like keyed into mental health and will seek to use the 988 number, but
Right.
that's one of our concerns.
So the 911 operators would need to be trained, as Councilmember Fleming just said, to kind of do some triage at their level. Dispatch, it make a decision and dispatch, you know, the police if that was indicated or the mental health crisis team if that was indicated. I'm sure there will be a, a case where they are on the side of caution perhaps and send the police, the police show up and realize that mental health professionals are more appropriate for a particular situation. Then if we're doing this properly, they'll get on the radio and, and call the, the mental health team in to take over. Is that, am I understanding this correctly?
Yeah, that's correct. I also sort of want to be very direct about how that level is sort of a very significant step from how the program is conceptualized by the state and the way that 911 call centers operate, as well as the response time that would be needed in order to do 911 diversion as opposed to what we're doing is sort of a very different thing. And like, a, a, a long-term infrastructure would need to be set before that's something that could really be implemented.
Yeah, so we have a ways to go before this is fully realized, but I think we're on the, on the right track here. And just a couple of practical questions. Councilmember Burns already addressed the zoning question. And just to clarify, we are not contemplating this as an overnight facility. It's, it's short-term for a few hours. You go back home or you go somewhere else before the facility closes.
Yes, although it, it, it's true that the, the long-term plan is for these facilities to be 24/7 facilities. And I think we're going to try to, to expand our hours as much as we can so that people who are working different hours, have different schedules, will still have the opportunity to avail themselves of, of the space. Since I'm talking, if I could just say this, the, the 590 funding has a, also an emphasis on community engagement. And I'm sure that Chris and his team are thinking about this. One thing that I want to share from having the living room in Skokie for 10 years is that we have become very good friends with our first responders. And so one of the things I think you'll find as we come into Evanston is we'd really like to talk to you about who we should be talking to. We really want to establish relationships where we can, we can be trusted members of the community and ask people what they need and how they need it. When we started in Skokie, we started with focus groups. And that would be our intention in Evanston, to have a series of focus groups where residents and professionals and first responders would tell us what they need and how they need it. And when you do that, then something happens where people begin to really understand what the living room is. And they have a sense of when it can be useful. So we have police and firefighters in, in Skokie who are sending people to us because they know that that would be a suitable place for them. And and I think, I want to make that pledge to you that we will do that. And I know that Chris and, and their team will also be learning about the community. And together, Turning Point and Trilogy will be sharing those sorts of relationships so that we really have a strong connection.
And so if properly executed, this will be lightening the burden on on the police department and the fire department, our current public safety.
Absolutely. We have a crisis program at Turning Point, so we, we have worked a lot with, with our police and fire. And, and I know that they feel relieved of some of the crises that are crises to a resident. But really probably don't meet the criteria of a proper first responder call. And to be able to make an endorsement of a service like the living room often alleviates them of a lot of pressure.
Then I said, one final question, just to clarify that this, at least initially, would be adults only?
Right. And I, I know that, I know that Jocelyn made a presentation about working with youth, but, but the funding for living rooms so far are for adults. And I also, I also want to say that it's important to, to try to differentiate what we're doing from what Jocelyn is doing. There's no fee for a living room service. There's it truly is a walk-in, call-in service. And I'm not sure what Jocelyn is doing, but but their youth programming plan is very different from an adult respite living room.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. That's all I have.
Thank you. So next is Councilmember Wynn, followed by Kelly, followed by Reed.
Thank you, Mayor Bis. I, I have a very bad cold, everyone, so please bear with me. And I, I apologize for having my video off, but it's just better that way. I, first, I want to thank the, the members of the committee for this and this really important discussion. And I think this is one of the best things that the city has embarked on in a long time. And also thank you to my fellow council members for all the questions that they've just asked. A lot of my questions that I had written down have been, have been asked. So I, I want to just express my very strong support for this. I, as all, any of us who have ever been to an emergency room knows, they are not calm places where you get instant care by people who will calm you down. I mean, they, they're designed to do something else. So I, I think that this is a brilliant idea and and I really look forward to the implementation of this and the expansions that we have just been talking about and the partnerships. This is very much needed in the community and certainly will be very welcome. So thank you to everyone who's worked on this.
Thank you. So now I'll have Councilmember Kelly, followed by Reed, followed by Braithwaite.
Yeah, I also feel very, I'm very supportive of this. This seems like a really needed addition to our city. And, and most of the questions that I had were also answered. I had one question, I assume this is seven days a week? It'll be open? Okay, wonderful. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you. So we'll go then to Councilmember Reed, followed by Braithwaite.
I keep my camera off as well. I just want to say thank you again to my colleagues who have led on this, Councilmember Fleming and Revel, particularly as well as the community members. And I want to thank, you know, Councilmember Burns for sharing his personal story. You know, anxiety attacks when you were a teenager. I, I think I might be in the living room as soon as it opens with some of the stuff that goes on here. So, but I, I, I'm just really thankful to the whole team. I, I had the opportunity to visit the, I believe it is Turning Point. The living room that is, yes, the Turning Point living room in, in Skokie. So I'm, that was my first time witnessing, you know, one of these models in person. And that was a very eye-opening opportunity. And I got to vicariously live through Councilmember Burns and, and other community leaders who were able to attend the other few walkthroughs. So extremely excited about this, looking forward to supporting this. Really glad that it's going to be in the Eighth Ward. And really excited, I'm, I'm, I'm sure Eighth Warders are going to be welcoming to this new facility and this will be a great addition to our community. So thank you for all the work that has been done. And I'm just Um, and I'm just really, really excited about that. I'll add somewhat separately about nine eight eight rolling out. I know that will be fully online in July, I believe, but that is also a very exciting um, addition uh, to creating a full wraparound uh, service for folks who are experiencing mental crisis uh, in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, council member Braithwaite.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, as well as all of our community, let me turn this on, sorry. All of our community partners that are, that are on the call, uh, as well as the council members who, who took lead. I, I, unfortunately, I haven't had an opportunity to, to visit these sites, but I find it a very interesting concept, just as I've had an opportunity to read through the memo as well as looking online. And I also feel that it, it has a real huge potential in terms of a cost savings. Just from our, our hospitals on, on down. So I guess a couple of questions that I have are, are really basic that probably could be answered with a site visit, which I'll, I'll try to prioritize that in the next month or so. So I, I think we'll get to the ask in terms of how we're going to move this thing uh, forward. And, and with that, my questions are, is there going to be a staff leading this effort? Or a department that's going to be assigned to to work with our community partners? I've, and I also haven't seen or, or it wasn't discussed in the memo, what our hours of operation are going to be. And all of these are leading to the other operational costs that we haven't really discussed. I'd like to be clear on what our definition of services will be in terms of who will be the ideal clients for this facility, along with the numbers that you will be able to uh, host on any given day. And then my last, you know, thoughts are, I think we've learned a lot in terms of how our city of Evanston provides services. And a lot of this stuff is just anecdotal, so I'm just going to share it. And that is, I think what we've learned from, you know, housing the homeless is that we did something really good during the time that people really needed it. However, what we've seen as an aftermath is we have more people, or I'll speak for myself and, and others can have their own thoughts is I feel that after taking care of the homeless, there are more people that I see that I don't recognize uh, prior to the pandemic that are still here in Evanston. And it's no secret that we've seen an increase in crime. So that my, my overall question is, how are we going to prioritize Evanston residents? And make sure that Evanston residents are a, a focal point? And if this does become a magnet for others coming from outside the community, which is, you know, a very human thing and a natural thing to, to happen, how are we going to deal with that? Uh, we have a, a facility that myself, uh, council member Nusma and Wynne, um, I won't name their name on, on Main and Ridge, that it's, it's very visible who the clients are. And, you know, you can't do anything about clients who hang out in a public park. However, at some point in their history, and I don't believe council member Nusma or, or Kelly can answer this question, that they changed their, you know, who they were serving. And as a result of that, we've seen a little bit more activity in our town. So as we get past this, you know, beginning phase and, and hopefully as it implements, I'm assuming that there just needs to be real clear control over who you're serving and if there is an expansion of services and people that our, our city uh, is, is very much, our city staff is, is knowledgeable of that. I mean, the other thing that I would just share in terms of opportunities for funding, I think the hospitals represent a really good good source of money. Uh, when we opened Erie, uh, I think that was a one point, I think and I could be wrong, but somewhere to the tune of 1.2 million is what Evanston Hospital saved when they closed the CAC clinic. And it wasn't any surprise, and I may have the numbers off, that that's the money that they fund in the tune of Erie. So I'm assuming between Evanston Hospital and St. Francis Hospital that if there truly is going to be a reduction of resources to both of their ERs, that with Evanston Hospital pledging over a million dollars to the city of Evanston, there are some huge opportunities for funding. And it sounds like you already have uh, St. Francis Hospital at the table. And so those are just the questions that I would love to see answered and addressed prior to us moving with a financial commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. Do, do you want folks to answer the questions? It's not possible now, or do you want?
Oh yeah, I'll be quiet. There's some quick answers to that, absolutely.
Well, I know that, I mean, obviously, uh, you know, Ms. Gunderski is in the Zoom and she may be able to speak to kind of how, what city departments and what the nature of the interaction with city staff would look like. And um, I would imagine Anne has some reactions to some of the other questions as well. But Kelly, do you want to go first?
Sure. Um, we would, I mean, obviously this would be like several departments we have to interact with. Um, Health and Human Services, obviously, Police, Fire, it'd be the coordination of multiple city departments. And I think we'd have to work out the logistics of all of that. But I see this being um, something that we would integrate across multi-departments.
And Anne?
Yes, um, in, in terms of hours, um, I, I would suggest, although I think we'd want to really discuss this with Evanston, that the hours be the same as our hours in our Skokie location, which is from 12 to eight. That would allow people to have a familiarity with when we tend to be open, what our services tend to be. Because we, we wouldn't be looking at vastly different client profiles or services offered. We'd be wanting to offer everything we could to anyone who came in. And I, I'm, I'm glad to hear the question about an ideal client. And actually, in, in the 10 years we've done this, nobody's ever asked me that before. So it's, it's really, it's, it's a great opportunity to say we see individuals from all over the spectrum of problems and illnesses and life changes. Um, and I, and I mean that very respectfully. We've, we've seen guests who have been in a very serious car accident or have narrowly avoided a very serious car accident. And they're upset and they're anxious and they can't settle down. We've seen people with chronic and severe mental illness who just have trouble managing from day to day to day and often need a little extra support to keep going. We've seen parents of adult children who have severe mental illness, and we've seen children whose parents have severe mental illness. So there are often family ties. There may be someone who has lost a job or has been kicked out of an apartment, or is having a relationship problem that they don't feel that they can resolve. And there also are a fair number of people who are simply looking for resources. And so the, the teams who work in the living room also know where the food banks are. They know where um, benefits can be applied for. In fact, we help people apply for benefits if they wish in the living room. We can't usually do that in one visit, but we can do it in a couple of visits. So um, the door is really open for anyone who says they're in crisis. And, and we don't define crisis. We, we let our guests tell us that they're in crisis and we take it from there.
Uh, Mayor Bis, I can answer one of Peter's questions, I think. I think, I just forgot. We, we have talked to um, North Shore and, and early on in the subcommittee's tenure. Um, we definitely weren't at this point in having necessarily a financial ask, but we did talk to them about relieving some of these um, pressures on their ER. And they, they definitely were interested in partnering with us. We'd have to go back about a financial commitment once we kind of have a better number. To council member Burns' point, I think you are right. We could probably always use more services in a bigger facility. But I think, you know, given that this one is pretty reasonable in cost and we don't have a ton of money, I would be, you know, more than supportive to start here and then build on this land or figure out how to expand as the services, you know, require us to do that. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up, just in terms of the nine one one, and, and Anne, your point about focus groups is you know, I, if we can really think through, and Eleanor and I can figure this out, how to use a subcommittee. I mean, a- as you know, we're a city of a lot of community engagement. We do a ton of focus groups, probably the Mental Health Board has already done some. And I, I do get leery when we start going down the focus group route and it prevents us from starting to actually provide services. I think probably just even the council members on this call can tell you what the services are based on the calls we have in our community. So I mean, I think there's definitely some space there and Eleanor and I can help with this with making the police and fire connection and figure that out. Cause again, we've had police and fire at our meetings and talked to them about responses and where they can drop people off. Um, and we've talked to, you know, the community. But I would just, you know, I think we're at the point, getting closer to the point to get open. And so I would love for us to kind of keep moving in that way and not kind of backtrack with asking the community what they want, because they've been pretty clear in telling us what they need. I think police and fire can tell us what they need. The hospitals can tell us what they need. You probably know. Um, and so we can start, the, the model would be great. And, and Chris, Eleanor and I can talk to you and probably Eleanor, we should try to reconvene our focus, our committee, our subcommittee, but about kind of continuing that connection, because we started before you were in place with police and fire and not only triaging those calls, but then how can they get people to you? You know, if they do encounter folks and you are not at the point of being able to respond to all the needs that we have on the street right away, how can they get people over to you? And I think Peter, your point about non-Evanston residents is, is definitely something we have to think through. I don't know what the rules are around that. I would not want us to be unwelcoming, but I definitely share your concerns regarding particularly, um, you know, as COVID came and we started offering more housing, which was the main thing to do, how that increased our homeless count here in Evanston. And what that does for our resources in our community as well. Not that we don't want to be unwelcoming, but we don't want to necessarily bring people into the community knowing we don't have long-term supports for them. Uh, we want to make sure they have the supports that they need, whatever that looks like. So I think that's something we'll have to be mindful of and figure out how to both support people, but not also um, cause more strain on the, the systems we already have in place.
I, I do think one important factor of that discussion is that while as, as important and meaningful as this is, it would not be unique. And so it would be less of a, hey, folks around the, the county here that Evanston is the place to go for a living room because there's Skokie, there's Northfield, there's Peach County, et cetera.
I'd, I'd also offer that this is where having Turning Point in Skokie and Trilogy in the city and the various locations of our partnering organizations can really be helpful. Cause we can, we can refer people to our different towns if we need to.
Well, thank you all for a really exciting and productive discussion about something that I think can be very, very important for the city. There's been some, some questions that I think give us all some homework to work on. And uh, but it does sound like with the general level of support, that it would be appropriate to, for the next time uh, we bring this to council, to bring it with a specific proposal with a request for funding. And, you know, certainly we'll be eager to kind of work with every council member between now and then to figure out, um, figure out what, what it's going to take to, to make sure that we're addressing the questions everyone has. With that, uh, that brings us to item SP two on our agenda, which is uh, for us for action after a great discussion in late December. Uh, is there a motion on item SP two?
So move.
Second.
Who was the second from?
Council member Reed.
Great, thank you. So council member Braithwaite moves approval of item SP two, council member Reed seconds. I, I'm, I'm almost certain that Audrey Thompson is in the Zoom. We obviously had a great discussion last time, but wanted to give her the opportunity to just um, kind of update folks um, before we open this up for discussion.
Audrey, can you turn your camera on? Other shoes.
Yes, I'm here. Thanks, Mayor Bis, um, and to the council members for, again, allowing me to come and update you on the memo that was provided to you all on the 20th. Um, again, just thanking you all for the discussion, uh, specifically to council members Braithwaite, Burns and Reed for um, calling the meeting together on the 20th. Um, but then I, I'd also like to thank Mayor Bis and um, Dr. Andrew Papa Christos for um, some additional work that we've done in order to strengthen the memo and to give some other alternatives as far as it's coming back later. And having um, more of a pilot program that will be evidence-based and trauma-informed. So I do really want to thank the Reimagine Public Safety Committee for all of the hard work that they um, did in order to provide some recommendations to us. And um, those recommendations will not go on deaf ears. Um, we will take those and also use them in order to create a task force and come back in April um, with a um, a program specifically for Evanston. So again, thank you all. Um, and I will entertain any questions that you all have for the updated memo.
Thank you so much. And I just want to give um, Andy Papa Christos just a chance to say a quick word. You know, it's been, I really, really appreciate the way the two of you came together and found a, a way forward that incorporates not only incorporates what you put in the memo for December 20th, but also some of the ideas uh, that Andy's working group had come up with. And just wanted to give Andy a chance to speak to that for a moment.
Yes, thank you. And I just really want to thank Ms. Thompson uh, and her team for taking time to listen to some of the recommendations from our Violence Prevention Working Group from the Reimagine Public Safety Committee. And I also want to recognize the members of our committee who, of course, put some, a, a lot of months into thinking through these things. And uh, we know we're very happy with the revised language and we really look forward to continuing partnering with this city where this is concerned. And, and just want to say a couple of things, um, and I'll, and I'll be as brief as, as possible. One is that again, our, our group consisted of lifelong Evanstonians with lived experience, uh, both with violence, experiencing firsthand its impact personally, professionally, decades of experience in this space. Um, want to draw attention, especially for those that are, that are looking at the revised language to some of the resources in the memo consistent with the last uh, proposal and some of the discussions. The, you know, the, the best practices that are being drawn in this memo are coming from um, some of the, the cutting-edge research locally, nationally, federally for reducing violence, especially gun violence, um, it from a community-based perspective. So there's other resources as people are considering these things. And just to summarize, you know, our, our sets of memos, uh, you know, we had three center recommendations we hope we come back to. One is strengthening the city's expertise, whether it's through training or new positions or, and again, some of this is included in the memo around specifically violence prevention and what that's going to mean as we do things like expand the age range, which I want to uh, say our committee agrees that is crucial. But you know, the types of services that are needed for 28, 29-year-olds are very different. The sort of needs that they have as uh, as individuals, as families, sometimes they'll have their own children, for example. So we look forward to having those conversations. I think we already started having great conversations. We hope eventually that the city will go back and revisit some of the um, needs around victim services and trauma-informed victim services. And finally, which, which really did make the revisions, and again, thank you to Ms. Thompson and her team uh, was really our recommendations about what it's going to take in Evanston in particular to reach those most immediately impacted and involved in violence itself. And really, there's lots of expertise locally and nationally. We think we can work towards this April goal uh, with, with the city. And our working group uh, just wants to again, thank everyone for the chance to respond and to take our concerns seriously, which um, which was great. So thank you.
Thank you. And I do want to thank not only Andy, but the, the working group, the chairs of the, of the Reimagine Public Safety Committee and the whole committee for the time they've put into this. This is um, you know, as I've said to everybody in these discussions, the stakes are so incredibly high here uh, that we just need every resource and every idea and every tool at our disposal. And I really appreciate the the hours and the passion and the expertise that, that so many folks have brought to bear. So with that, um, thanks so much again to both of you. I'm happy to take any questions or comments. Uh, start with council member Reed.
Yeah, I, I just want to uh, thank you to uh, Audrey uh, uh, for uh, your leadership and that to Professor Papa Christos um, for, for adding your expertise to this as well. I'm, I'm really excited about moving forward with this. Um, I know this is pared down a bit from the original uh, from, from last time, but I think that's perfectly fine. Given that uh, we're taking real uh, steps forward and, and using uh, some additional time and paying back some of that funding to come back with even better proposals in a few months. So uh, really excited to see us moving forward. Uh, and, and I do just want to recognize an eighth warder who serves on uh, you know, that, that committee uh, with Papa, with, with Professor Papa Christos, which is Evangeline Seemark, uh, who has uh, that name has been popping up and, and, and tonight uh, in, in a number of places. So just to recognize um, the work of that great eighth warder. So thank you. And I appreciate council member Burns, Braithwaite, uh, as well, particularly council member Burns. Thank you. And I appreciate councilmember Burns, Braithwaite, uh, as well particularly councilmember Burns for, for leading the call, uh, to have that meeting. On the 20th in response to, uh, the tragic, uh, particularly in response to the tragic, tragic events of, uh, of, 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 of recent. In our city, but really just, you know, recognizing that overall trend and, you know, taking. Uh, that quick steps in, in, in the face of tragedy. So thank you all.
Thanks so much. Councilmember Burns.
Uh, yeah, just want to thank Audrey and her team for working on, uh, this proposal as well as. Uh, the reimagining, the, the violence prevention, reimagining public safety committee. Um, you know, I, I still say after looking at, uh, the, um. The, the memo or memo sent from the committee that, that. Most of what was in the memo mirrored what I saw in Audrey's proposal. So I think more so. What, what's great about this is it seems like there's some opportunity and some desire for the two to come together to collaborate. On developing a model specific to Evanston and that would be new to Evanston. And so I just want to make that clear. Then again, I think. Her proposal is very similar to what we saw coming out of the working group. Uh, but if we want to really sit down and develop. Um, a model unique to Evanston, specific to Evanston, that's based on models that we're seeing of around. The Chicago area, around the country, uh, I, I, I fully support that. So, uh, looking forward to seeing what comes of that and, um, just wanted to thank. Everyone that worked on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, councilmember Nusma.
You know what? Oh.
Go ahead, Peter.
So thank you. No, I've had my hand in. So someone lowers it, but I keep getting passed over. I'll wait until after.
No, go, go ahead, councilmember. I just didn't see your hand at all. So.
Oh, no worries. No worries. I. I'm just joining in the, the course of, uh. Of applause in, in terms of the great work that we all get to, to support. So to. Audrey and her outreach team, thank you for everything that you've been doing thus far. Uh, as well as the expanded efforts that we're, we're, we're voting to support tonight. I, I think this is real. Customized support that's, that's specific to Evanston. Um. I'm a little bit critical and arrogant in terms of the issues that we experience here and the difference that I see. Uh. You know, here in Evanston versus the larger cities of Chicago. It's, it's difficult for me to make that leap in comparison. Uh, especially due to the intimate nature of some of these. Issues that we've dealt with over the many years, but I love the holistic approach. Uh, that is being prescribed. And definitely in, in full of support over the last couple of weeks, just. Between now and the last time you spoke, you've done a tremendous amount of outreach. Um, I've had a chance to touch base with some of our community partners in their. Excitement in, in joining in, in terms of, uh, meeting the needs of our target, uh, population. So. Thank you again for your efforts as well as your team. And, uh, looking forward to what 2022 is going to bring. Uh, in terms of the work that we have ahead of us. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And again, sorry, I don't understand why I'm not seeing your hand.
That's all right. I'll text.
For yourself.
I'll text.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Nusma.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I, I will join the chorus of people offering thanks to Ms. Thompson. Thank you, Audrey, for. Getting us to this part, um, getting us to this point, uh, and, and not only just you, but everyone who's been part of this process. I'm. Really, uh, happy to support using ARPA money in this, uh, in this manner. I think this is a well-thought-out plan. I like the focus on some of the, the quantitative metrics here. Um, of course, let's not lose sight of the, the qualitative measures that are a little bit hard to track, but you know, kind of, we know it when, when we feel it kind of a thing. Um. And in terms of, you know, kind of, uh, making this part of the, the culture of Evanston on an ongoing basis. Uh, I will just point out that we've got ARPA money to get this going this year. Uh, we will be challenged, uh, to find sources of funding for this. On an ongoing basis and, um, you know, I'm happy to meet that challenge, uh, along with, uh, my colleagues on the council. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, councilmember Burns, are you, is your hand up for a second, uh, second time or is it still up from the first time?
It's still up. Sorry.
Got it. Uh, in that case, I see nobody else seeking, uh, to speak. So if, uh. If no one else wants to speak, just want to again, thank, uh, Audrey and her team for. Uh, this just unbelievably important work. It's, you know, maybe the most important thing that we do as a, as a community. Um, and with that, uh, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Revel.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite.
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
And councilmember Reed.
Uh, Burns.
Oh, Burns, sorry. I apologize.
Aye.
Uh, with eight voting in favor and none voting against, uh, the motion passes. Um, and so we'll look forward to lots of, lots of continued work on this. Um. Thank you again to everyone for making this happen. Um. That brings us to the consent agenda. Um, I am going to pull off, uh, items A 16, 17, 18, 19, 20 and 21 because, uh, they are, they're all requesting, uh. Rule suspension. Um, is there anything else that folks want pulled off the consent agenda besides A 16 through 21? All right. Um, seeing none, I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I will move the consent agenda, uh, with the exceptions of items A 16 through A 21.
Second.
Councilmember Nusma moves passage of the entire consent agenda with the exception of items A 16, A 17, A 18, A 19, A 20 and A 21. Councilmember Braithwaite seconds. Is there any discussion? Uh, seeing none, uh, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Revel.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite.
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
And councilmember Burns.
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against. Uh, the motion passes and the entire consent agenda except for A 16 through A 21 passes. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to suspend the rules simultaneously on all six items, A 16 through A 21? To allow them both to, um. Be voted on simultaneously for introduction and for action.
I will move suspension. Yep. Second.
All right. Councilmember Braithwaite moves that we suspend the rules so that items A 16 through A 21 can all be voted on, uh, both for introduction and for action tonight. Councilmember Reed seconds. Is there any discussion?
I just want to, uh, reiterate what I said at committee, uh, for the entire committee, uh, that, uh, one of the liquor licenses is for. A business on Howard Street, uh, Estacion. Um, and I want to, you know, thank, uh, you know, the, the community and I'm a predecessor for the vision of Howard Street. Howard Street's coming together as a, a one-stop shop for folks who want to, uh, you know, get cuisine from all over the world, uh, with like Latin food, Jamaican food. Uh, African food, you know, you got the whole, um, panoply there. So just really excited about what's happening on Howard and continuing the development along Howard Street. You know, which was underway before I got in office, but just fortunate to be a part of it. So, thank you.
Um. Great. Um, lots, lots happening in town. Um, so with that, uh, can we have the vote? And this is the vote on the motion to suspend the rules. We'll also take another vote after this, should this pass.
Councilmember Revel.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite.
Aye.
Councilmember Wynn.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Eight voting in favor and none voting against the motion carries. And so now we can. Vote on these items for introduction and for action simultaneously. Would someone like to make a motion on all six?
I will move item A, uh, I believe it's, uh, aid. For A 16, is that correct?
16 through 21.
Yep. I move item A 16 through 21.
And I will second.
Councilmember Reed moves, uh, passage for both introduction and action on items A 16, 17, 18, 19, 20 and 21. Councilmember Nusma seconds. Just to reiterate, if this passes its final action on all six of these items, is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Revel.
Aye.
Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite.
Oh, no. Aye.
Councilmember Wynn.
Aye.
Councilmember Nusma.
Aye.
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
On this matter, there are eight voting in favor and none voting against. And so all six, uh, all six items, uh, are now, uh, passed. Um, this, if I'm not mistaken, this should bring us to call of the wards, uh, beginning with councilmember Revel.
Uh, no report, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes, uh, uh, two, two items. One, I want to announce, or three items. I want to let it water. Sorry, I'm looking down, trying to. Check the calendar. Um. Uh, that we will have a, uh, ward, uh, not a ward meeting, but let's say a ward check-in, uh. On the weekend prior to the council city manager selection. So that. Um, that'll be on the 24th when we meet an executive session to discuss that. So two days before that would be the 22nd on Saturday. Um, I believe if I know, yeah, uh, we'll have, uh, a, um. A, a ward meeting or a ward huddle, if you will, on that Saturday. Um, at one o'clock, I'll send out, uh, information for the Google meet, uh, for, for folks, uh, to hear feedback. Uh, regarding, uh, the city manager selection as we head into, uh, the vote. Uh, and that will be, uh, in addition to our regular ward meeting. Um. Next, I, I just want to move, um. I've spoken to, uh, almost, almost all of you. I think maybe everyone here at this moment regarding this. Uh. We, as, as Mayor Bis mentioned at the top of the meeting, um, we're moving back into a, uh, stricter form of, uh, uh, of. Um. Uh, we have tighter COVID restrictions, uh, because of the spreading Omicron variant. Uh, and we know that hospitalizations and breakthrough cases are, uh, at reaching record numbers. Um, and so with that, um, I am interested in, and with school closings, uh, starting to roll or the school. Reversions back to, um. Uh, remote learning happening across the nation. I'm, uh, looking to, uh. We, to have the conversation regarding hazard pay, uh, uh, again. Um, I was very pleased, uh, through the conversations, uh, that I had with my colleagues today that, uh, there seems to be. Uh, strong support at least for a discussion of it and the folks understand the merit. Of, uh, looking at hazard pay for our, our grocery store workers, um, who are at a heightened risk. Uh, to some of their other counterparts, particularly their lower wage, uh, counterparts. Um, in that the, the vaccine mandates, uh, and vaccine passport requirements do not apply to grocery stores. Um, we are seeing, uh, hiring issues at a number of locations, including, uh, a number of sectors, including grocery stores. Um, and so, so with that, I, I'd just love to, to rehave the conversation, um, on the 24th, um, about. Uh, hazard pay. And so I am going to move, um, that a special order of business be placed on the agenda for the 24th. Um, to begin, um, you know, for introduction of, um. The, the hazard pay bill, of a hazard pay bill for grocery store workers at large grocery stores.
So councilmember Reed moves, uh, that a special order of business be placed on the January 24th agenda, uh, which would be the introduction of an ordinance. On the January 24th, city council meeting agenda, which would be a, an city ordinance, uh, establishing hazard pay for workers at large grocery stores. Uh, is there a second for that motion?
Thank you.
Uh, councilmember Burns seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk, oh, sorry, councilmember Fleming.
Uh, yes, thank you. So I know councilmember Reed did talk to me about this and I, I, you know, gave him my. Opinion. I guess my question would be. Well, and I don't, I can just vote. No, I guess, but my question is why does this seem to be a special order of business and then not just go through referrals committee? I, I. I realize referral, referrals committee has not been ideal because we've made referrals and still I don't think things are moving that fast. On the, um, to get on the agendas. Um. So that's just kind of a, not maybe a question, just, you know, if we're trying to move things through a process and then. Is the goal to put this on for the 24th for discussion or you mentioned Mayor Bis put it on for ordinance for the 24th?
So it would not be for action on the 24th is, is my intention. Uh, no.
Counsel, just to make sure that I got the, the motion. I, I heard you say for introduction. Is that?
Yeah.
So, so I guess it would be for introduction on the 24th and if it passed then for action on February 14th. Is that, is that what you have, councilmember?
Yeah. So there'd be a month between now and then, um, before it come to council for action. Uh, and to answer the, the first question is the, um. You know, just as the item that, uh, there, there are plenty of items that come before the council that through the special order of business process. I think given, um, the. Given the, um. Given the, the fact that there is, you know, a, a need now and, uh, you know, we are currently meeting virtually now. We're not, you know, sending, you know. Our own safety through referrals process. Um, I think it makes sense to, to move, uh, with, with, with haste on this and particularly since we've had this, this. Parts, parts of this discussion, uh, in the, in the past, um, and, and many of the factors and concerns of folks. I had previously have now been answered. Um, and I, I, I think it makes sense to, to move forward with, with haste with this.
All right. So I, you know, as I told you on the telephone, I. Would be open to having a discussion. I think there's a lot of parameters we need to figure out. I don't remember all of the details of the last discussion, so I can't. I don't remember exactly what happened, but. You know, I, I would imagine if you don't work at a large grocery store, but work at places that are also still open, would like to. Be qualified and so on and so forth. So that's a, that's part of discussion. But yeah, I mean, if it's a discussion, that's one thing. If it's for introduction and we have an ordinance. You know, that, in my opinion, just seems very fast. But, you know, that's just my opinion.
Councilmember Reed.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Uh, do you want to respond to that, councilmember?
Uh, yeah, I just want to, uh, reiterate that it would, you know, there'd be a month between. Or over a month between today and, you know, it actually come into council for any kind of final action. Um, I'm at least a month, um, given the current process. Uh, so I think that allows a lot of time for discussion.
Councilmember Braithwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank, you know, councilmember Reed. He, he did. Reach out to me, um. Just as, as a heads up in what I shared with him is the same thing that I'll share with. Members of council and also the public listening. So, you know, obviously my position the last time around. Uh, it starts with a communication with the, with the businesses that would be impacted, particularly Valley. And, uh, Food for Less. And so there's no way that I could support something like this without. Having a conversation. And one of the things that we learned the last time that this came up is that some of the stores actually. Did something for their employees. So I have no idea what their strategy is. Right now I do know that this comes at a time where all retailers are struggling for, to find the appropriate staff. And, um, those are just things that I need to have those discussion before, with them before. Uh, I would feel, uh, comfortable moving, you know, having it. Uh, I am a little bit concerned for it going as an introduction. So. If we were going to force a discussion, I would hope that other council members that would have. Those discussions with the retailers in their ward, just so we come with some. Understanding before taking the next step. And then lastly, I'm also. Concerned that we are limiting this just to grocers and does that. Set up any grounds for, for any type of legal action, not to mention. That we still have a pretty hot topic with how we compensate our city's staff. So. Um. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Bis may quickly respond.
Oh, sure.
Okay, uh, particularly, uh, to the question of, uh, any legal liability, as I mentioned on our call earlier, uh, there were lawsuits filed, uh, ag- against every municipality just about that, uh, uh, tried this, uh, previously, uh, last year, um, and those lawsuits have since been, uh, dealt with, and the municipalities have come out on top, uh, in that, uh, these, this model is constitutional, it meets, uh, legal guidelines in, in singling out grocery stores, particularly, again, uh, the reason for singling out grocery stores is, uh, they're, 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 how critical they are, uh, as far as our food infrastructure, uh, to providing, uh, safe and nutritious food to folks in our community, uh, but also, uh, given, you know, looking at, uh, the risk that is uniquely created here in that, um, um, our, uh, vaccine mandate, for example, uh, vaccine passport mandate, uh, is not applied in the same way to grocery stores, uh, as it is for restaurants and other, uh, fitness facilities and other places where folks, uh, congregate in large numbers. Thank you.
Councilmember Revel?
Um, well, just a question, um, Councilmember Reed, did your motion, um, talk about this would only apply to large grocery stores?
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're, oh, sorry.
Well, and in our conversation earlier today, you mentioned the idea that maybe the city would, um, be able to provide some funding for, uh, hu- hazard pay for perhaps, um, employees at smaller grocery stores, so is that still part of your proposal, or?
Uh, yes, certainly, I think, uh, if there, there was something for hazard pay, I think they're, uh, you know, similar, but maybe slightly, uh, I mean, it depend on the will of the council here, uh, similar, but maybe slightly separate tracks, uh, but yes, I, I'm thinking of a place like Valley, for example, which is, you know, of our larger grocery, grocers, uh, Valley is our smallest large grocer, if you will, um, and, uh, because they're, they're smaller, and they're not, you know, the size of a Jewel, a Target, a Whole Foods, Trader Joe's, whatever, uh, you know, I think there is the possibility, uh, after discuss, having this discussion with, uh, with, with manager again, with interim manager Ganderski, um, she, she put the idea, uh, you know, which I thought was a really solid idea, um, that, you know, ARPA could be used, uh, for this, and, you know, if ARPA was to be used for this, I think it would be best placed for a, a, a store like Valley, uh, which is a smaller store.
Hmm, okay, I mean, I, I'm, I'm happy to support, uh, putting it on the agenda for our next council meeting, um, but I do think I have quite a few questions.
Yeah, and, and certainly what I'm, uh, really, and thank you for that, I'm, I'm really, uh, I've, I've had conversations with almost everyone, uh, but certainly looking to have, continue that here and at the next meeting, and, uh, work with, uh, you know, uh, our, our city manager and, uh, staff and other colleagues to, uh, get answers to all of the questions that folks have, so we can, uh, make sure that we're doing what's doing right by our workers.
Next is Councilmember Newsma, followed by Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I am reluctant to support this, uh, for introduction at our next council meeting, because I do think if we move forward, uh, with something like this, there are, uh, a lot of questions with, uh, without answers, and there's a lot of a discussion left to happen, if it goes to our next council meeting for introduction, you know, that assumes that we will have, uh, uh, the structure of an ordinance in front of us to consider, and I don't think we're there yet, uh, I, I think we do need to do a lot more homework before we can get to that point, so, uh, that's all I have right now.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Yes, that, uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, uh, Councilmember Reed talk, called me late this afternoon to talk about this, and I think it's a topic that would be, is worth exploring, but I have the same concerns that have been raised already, that this is very fast, and that by having it be a, um, special order of business, that, uh, we're, we're kind of putting it on the fast track, um, without necessarily giving ourselves the amount of time that we might need, and as I raised, um, the last time this came up, uh, we really have to make sure we in, um, bring in the business community, and I'm very concerned about, um, the other businesses that we have that are also, that also have essential workers, and how do we, uh, justify grocery stores and, um, versus a number of other businesses that we have in the community, so, while I, I'm, uh, happy to, uh, look again at this issue, I don't want to be, um, uh, have us put in a corner where we feel, uh, where we might be acting before we're, we have all the information that we need. Thank you.
Mayor Bis, if I may quickly respond to both, uh, Councilmember Nguyen and Newsma?
I mean, I guess so.
Sure, okay, yeah, thank you. Uh, uh, both, uh, to Councilmember Nguyen and, and Newsma, uh, you know, I, I, um, one, I, I, a- as I did last time, um, if, I, I think moving it forward for special order of business is the, the proper avenue, uh, as I committed last time, and as I believe I also supported last time, uh, if for some reason the policy is not, uh, if we're not ready to move forward, I also will support, um, you know, holding off on it for a, a meeting and allowing for that third meeting, um, I, I will also say that having an actual ordinance in front of us, to Councilmember Newsma's point, uh, that we can actually vet and talk about for introduction is better than, you know, talking about it, you know, kind of pie in the sky, this, this, you know, at this point, this is not a, a, a new policy, uh, essentially, this has existed in communities across our nation, this, we're taking a, a, a fairly, at this point, a, a boilerplate model that has been tested in courts, uh, that has been tested economically, so, I, I think the real thing to look at is what have, you know, uh, to have an ordinance, uh, that is modeled after some other communities, and then look at, uh, what have been the effects of, uh, you know, similar legislation on, you know, uh, the grocers, uh, the legal aspect is, I, I think, very clearly answered, um, a- and then, um, you know, I think the, the questions that Councilmember Nguyen raised, uh, are, are also answered, and then finally, I, I will say that in this model, um, to Councilmember Braithwaite's point as well, certainly, uh, folks who are already, uh, good actors, and, and, uh, Trader Joe's and others in the past, uh, were, were on the forefront here, um, in providing additional wages, um, this would not go, uh, at least the model that has been proposed previously in that, you know, I, I want to bring back as, uh, an initial framework, um, you know, that model gave folks credit for, um, and, uh, 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 support that they're already providing to their, to their workers, and so they would not have to pay anything, if their, their base level of support matched what we were, uh, gonna request as a council, uh, they would not have to pay anything additional.
Councilmember Burns?
Uh, yeah, just, just wanted to say that I, uh, I agree, we, it's, would be a much more constructive conversation if we had an ordinance, something in front of us to, to weigh and, um, and react to, that being said, I don't know, because we, there's already, uh, ordinance drafted, I don't know if we need this to be for introduction to achieve that, I think it's already been achieved, um, I'm certainly happy to support it for intro, but, but probably would prefer it as a discussion item, we're willing to support it, um, for introduction, um, I think it's important that we do one or the other, just because, um, we're not gonna think about this again at all unless, uh, we, um, clearly establish it as a priority for us as a city, and as Councilmember Reed stated, things have, uh, developed around us, those lawsuits that were brought up as a concern, and our previous discussion about this, as Councilmember Reed stated, uh, have either all or mostly failed, and, um, and these types of, uh, uh, hazard pay requirements have, have, uh, still stand, and so, um, if we are to look at it, this is, it was the time to do it before, certainly the time to do it now, I believe having this for introduction and discussion at least, you know, forces us to consider it, and, uh, if it fails, it fails, but it's, it's certainly worth having the discussion, I agree with, uh, Councilmember Braithwaite, and that was my, my first reaction, when Councilmember Reed called me about this, was that we need to one hundred percent reach out to the, um, business community, um, and, uh, in particular, the ones that, that reached out with concerns the, the last time this was decided, so, there's some thoughts, thank you.
Uh, thank you, I, I think, I think the remaining hands are leftover hands, not people seeking to speak again, is that, oh, sorry, I apologize, Councilmember Revel?
Um, well, given, uh, the number of questions that it seems that my colleagues have and that I have as well, and Councilmember Burns' point just now, that we do have, um, an ordinance from before that we could look at, so, I, I guess I would suggest to Councilmember Reed that you amend your motion, um, to have it be a discussion item, and ask that the memo for that discussion item include the ordinance that we had, uh, before us, um, a number of months ago, so we do have that model to use for our discussion purposes, but I, I think everybody, just about everybody we've heard from this evening, this evening would feel more comfortable if this were a discussion item, um, um, at the next meeting, and that would still, you know, we could still act expeditiously, um, from then on, so that, that would be my strong encouragement.
May Mayor Bis, if I may quickly respond to that? Yeah, um, so I am, uh, here's what I'll say, we, we've had this discussion, uh, almost, well, I'm not gonna say a year ago, but we had this discussion a while ago, um, and, uh, you know, we, we have a framework for this, we know what the business community is gonna say, they're gonna say, we don't want to do this, this is illegal, if, you know, what they said last time, I'm, I definitely want to have those conversations, and I will have those conversations, and I think my colleagues should, but let's play this out, we hold it for, only for discussion, uh, at the next meeting, our hands are certainly tied, um, in the, the timeframe in which this, uh, can be passed, if it's for introduction, we still allow ourselves the opportunity, if it needs to be, uh, if for some reason there are major questions in two weeks, and then, and I'm over a month, that aren't answered in a month, uh, we could still hold it, uh, and I, again, I said I would be supportive of that, but if we put it merely for discussion the next time, that would mean the fourteenth of February would be the first meeting in which it would be for introduction, and then, uh, you know, two weeks from then, uh, is, you know, the first time we could take, actually, it'd be, you know, a, a month and a half, two months before it's up for a final vote, um, and, you know, our, our workers, you know, need support, uh, now, I wish, again, we had passed this ordinance, um, you know, uh, months ago when it was first brought up, and it was in place now to kick in, um, you know, as this new, uh, crisis is, um, is, is, is taking hold, but, you know, as we're meeting virtually, as today, the vaccine passport mandate is taking place, I think, uh, you know, we've said as a community that, you know, this, our response to COVID is extremely important, and we need to do, uh, whatever we can to, uh, protect, uh, lives and our workers to ensure, uh, you know, the continuation of, of services, and so that would be my, uh, reason for wanting to c- continue with it for introduction, again, I, as I said, I would be happy if, you know, the majority support was there, to, to myself also support, um, you know, tabling it for another meeting if it's not ready, either next meeting or the, the meeting afterward.
Uh, Councilmember Revel?
Oh, well, we can't hold a special order of business, I mean, obviously you could table it, um, but we could also, if we, following the discussion at the next meeting, um, we can always have it be moved, we could suspend the rules at the following meeting, just to introduce it and act on it at the same meeting, so I, I think we could, we could end up at the same point if, if we've got all our questions answered.
I, I agree with you, and I, I thought, thought about that, but the thing is, if we were to suspend the rules, uh, just one member could vote no to suspending the rules and, and, and stop the process, uh, whereas if we table, it would take more than one member to, uh, to, to stop the process or to continue, and again, uh, my word is, is surely that, uh, I would be supportive of a motion to table it, you know, it's, it's still doable, it'd take six votes, if my, uh, understand, if my memory of our rules is correct, uh, and you count me, and I'm sure everyone else who spoke, um, as, as a vote to table it, um, if need be.
So I think, it sounds like we're at an impasse between the two of you here, so Councilmember Revel, you're welcome to make a motion to amend the underlying motion or, or make a substitute motion, but I don't think you're gonna prevail upon, Councilmember Reed, to, to.
All right, well, uh, just to test where my, uh, colleagues are, then, I'm not exactly sure what the official motion should be, I move to, uh,
You can make a substitute motion.
Well, he wouldn't have to agree to that substitute motion?
Oh, man, well, then you can, you can, you could propose an amendment in that case.
Oh, okay, I'll try that, I move to amend, um, Councilmember Reed's motion to say that we, this be an item for discussion at our meeting, uh, at our next council meeting.
Second.
Councilmember Revel moves to amend the underlying motion so that the special order of business would become a discussion item, and all of them are introduction, Councilmember Nguyen seconds, is there any additional discussion on this topic?
I, I will just, uh, quickly say, you know, I'm, I'm happy that we're moving this forward, uh, so thank you, Alderman Revel, uh, and, and others for support of moving this forward, but I, I do hope that we really do work, uh, with haste and imagine, um, ourselves and our family and, uh, the ones that we love as, uh, workers at grocery stores and, uh, other essential workers who are having to, unlike some other, you know, employees, you know, they're not healthcare workers, they didn't sign up to be necessarily on the front lines, uh, uh, in, during a pandemic, but they, they still are, um, and so let's just work with the, the haste as if this is our own family, and our loved ones who are, are having to deal with this, uh, without much support.
Thank you, um, would the clerk please call the roll on Councilmember Revel's motion to amend the underlying request?
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Fleming?
Can you remind me where we left, so it's just to have it as a discussion?
Yes, for discussion.
Hi.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite? Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Uh, uh, aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Seven voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries, uh, and now I hope we can vote on the amended motion without any further discussion, um, so would the clerk please call the roll on the amended motion, which now says the, uh, January twenty-fourth city council meeting will have a special order of business, which will be a discussion item about, uh, this topic.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Eight voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and we continue with call of the wards.
And I still have one very quick, not another motion, so that was as far as discussion, um, uh, but I, I do, uh, we, I think we all received, uh, or at least most of us received a letter from, uh, Evanston Community Fridges, um, uh, regarding, uh, an order that was issued by our health department to, uh, from my understanding, shut down the community fridges, um, and I am, uh, disappointed in that, uh, but certainly, I can't be, you know, if it's, if it is our code, uh, that those community fridges are not allowed, I cannot be disappointed with any staff member necessarily, um, but what I am disappointed in is us, and so I'm hope, I'm gonna be making a referral, um, to allow for, um, you know, to create an exemption in our code to allow for community fridges, I think it's a great, um, asset to our community to, to have, uh, these, uh, sources of, uh, mutual aid, um, and, in our community, and I would love to, uh, encourage that this is happening across, um, our, our nation as far as the proliferation and the, the existence of these, I hope proliferation isn't bad, uh, but the, the, the existence of, um, the, the community fridges, um, and, uh, I, I really want to support that, and the, the young folks who are leading that effort, I see folks in the eighth ward, uh, constantly at the community fridge next to, um, the new Palm House. the new Palm House stocking it, and I always make sure to, you know, say thank you to folks and tell them how important it is if I if I notice it. So you know, this is really important. I hope we can adjust our code. Thank you.
Councilmember Fleming?
No, wait, boy.
Councilmember Kelly?
Yes, we're having a first ward community meeting this Thursday from seven to eight thirty to discuss the Varsity Theater and the alleyway next to it by Bookman's Alley with the developer. So I hope first ward residents will join us and anybody else to hear about a proposal for that important strip of our downtown. And the next Thursday, we'll have our first our regular first ward meeting. Thank you. That's all.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, on behalf of our reparations committee, where Councilmember Burns and Councilmember Reed, along with our other community volunteers, we will target this Thursday at nine AM at Fleetwood Jordan. We're still working to confirm the plans to draw the names of our first round of applicants for for the new housing program. I hear some echoing in the background. I'm not sure if that's because of me or someone else is unmuted. So there should be announcement coming, but we just wanted to give a heads up that we, our last committee meeting moved the last step, and this will get us closer to boarding our first sixteen residents with the repair for the harm. And then, secondly, we will host a second ward meeting this Thursday virtually. And we will introduce our new PST officer and as well as discuss the city manager's updates on city manager search. Thank you.
Councilmember Winn?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was very exciting news, Councilmember Braithwaite. I look forward to hearing more about that. Just briefly, Thursday, January 27th, will be the next third ward town hall meeting. It will be virtually, unfortunately, it will be from seven to eight thirty PM, and everyone will be getting an announcement with a Zoom link. Thank you.
Councilmember Newsma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. February ward meeting will be Tuesday, February 1st at seven PM. I will make the call closer to that meeting, whether we will do that virtually or in person. Saturday, February 12th, office hours from ten to noon. We will most likely do that in person, but reserve the right to change and do that virtually. As far as the city manager search is concerned, I'd like to thank all the fourth ward residents who applied to participate on the on the resident panel. I look forward to hearing from those of you who were not selected. In particular, shout out to the two that were selected, Susan Barrett Kelly and Wendy Pollak. I've already talked to Susan, who is a retired HR professional and has given us some some good stuff to think about as we continue the process here. So everyone else, fourth ward residents, please let me know your thoughts. I believe the the YouTube videos of the town hall should have been posted by this point. Thank you.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes, first, wanted to say thanks to to Sheik and I think Jesse, city staff, they have helped me schedule out the next upcoming meetings and so upcoming fifth ward meetings. And so the last Thursday of each month, we will have fifth ward meetings beginning at seven PM. We're going to hold virtual meetings until until circumstances change with the pandemic. And and then also wanted to I think I've discussed this before, but announce a working group committee that I've recently established with the advice of city staff, because of staff capacity issues. They've recommended that we establish this as a working group instead of an official committee of the city, but after we meet one or two times, I will make the committee available to the public, for the public to participate, in particular, fifth ward residents, but it's called the Here to State Committee. And real without going into all the names, the folks will release it at some point, but we basically have find my notes, sorry. Real estate brokers who are participating, all local Evanston folks, small developers, realtors who who work generally in the Chicago area, but but live in the fifth and second wards. A member of Evanston Development Cooperative with connections for the homeless, which of course is a housing affordability and homeless prevention advocacy organization. And we are going to be working on five things primarily to start, one, creating an inventory of all the affordable housing efforts underway and conduct an asset in gaps analysis to identify opportunities to expand workforce housing in Evanston, conducting underutilized land analysis to identify vacant or underutilized property, public or private, and score the site based on its potential to become developed into workforce housing. Evaluate the pros and cons of the city establishing a local housing authority and a local land bank. Identify housing developments that have expiring affordability restrictions and develop a plan to renegotiate the affordability terms for the current landlord. And last, explore the feasibility of engaging and collaborating with low and moderate income tenants interested in converting into shared ownership models such as such as limited equity housing cooperants. Our focus is going to be on the on the fifth ward. We have been assured by staff that they will support us as needed. And so I'm excited about this. We've got some good folks that have agreed to participate in this, and again, we'll make sure those the second and third meetings and so on and so forth that the public is is able to participate. Thank you.
Councilmember Newsma is recognized for a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me pull that up.
And I'm sorry, if I may ask, if personnel is not mentioned yet, if we can just add the exemption for personnel?
Personnel is mentioned in that. I mean, I don't know what Councilmember Newsma has in mind.
I have a ready answer. Per S. to five Illinois compiled statutes, one twenty slash two A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding litigation and personnel. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session as enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act in five ILCS one twenty slash two A, C eleven and C twelve.
Second.
Councilmember Newsma moves that we resolve into executive session. Councilmember Winn seconds. Is there any discussion?
It was it was Alderman Revel, excuse me.
I'm so sorry.
That's all right.
I'm a monster. Councilmember Revel, seconds. Is there any discussion? Seem known to the clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Revel?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Fleming?
All right, aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Braithwaite?
Aye.
Councilmember Winn?
Aye.
Councilmember Newsma?
Aye.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
With eight voting in favor and none voting against, at eight fifty six PM, the Evanston City Council resolves into executive session. Just a bit of housekeeping, so that entails ending this Zoom and joining a different Zoom. And so I'll see you folks over there.